Viewers so far. We're rolling. Thanks for coming in, brother. I appreciate your time.
Yeah.
Mike Britton's my guest, elected first term Joe. Well, some of the media would call you a junior counselor. Uh, city of St. Catharines. Elected in St. George's ward. First time around too, eh?
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. There was eight people running that time. It was the most contested ward in the city.
Wow.
Yeah.
And, uh, you were a Rick Dykstra ticket guy? No?
No, no. You know what? Um, I didn't really know Rick that much at that point, I'll be honest, but I got to know him once I was on city council.
Yeah.
So.
I just, uh, I thought he had a ticket pretty much and he had a whole bunch of guys that he seemed to be supporting and, uh, and so you, you're saying that, what, you didn't have an affiliation? He didn't give you a helping hand because it seemed like everyone that was associated with him got, got picked up, got elected, except for, uh, maybe Joe on Port De Luz either. Okay, let's just make sure.
Okay, so we're good.
Sounding good. Looks good. Well, it looks like a couple of long, lanky, awkward looking dudes playing, uh, pretend DJs. So anyway, I'm Jim Fannin. Welcome to the Jim Fannin Show. This is the new edition of the Jim Fannin Show. We are backing it up with another copy here, so we'll get some good audio, but, um, forgive me, Facebook peeps out there. It's just the, uh, microphone off the, the phone going, so that's all you guys get, but, uh, we'll upload it to YouTube to the Jim Fannin Show page. You can find us on Twitter at Jim Fannin Show, at Jim Fannin, uh, on every podcast platform basically that's out there, iTunes, Stitcher, TuneIn Radio, all that kind of stuff, so. Uh, and if you want to interact with the show, we're kind of watching the live feed here, so we'll take your comments and questions if you have some. You can just chime in on the live Facebook feed and then catch us later on the podcast if you want to check the audio. So, Mike Britton's my guest, uh, is introduced already, first term counselor in St. Catharines. Mike, yeah, why don't you just start out by telling us a little bit about like who you are, uh, what you kind of believe in, what kind of guy you are, and I, I'm more interested in like, if I'm, if I'm hanging with Mike Britton, what personality type do I have? What are my morals look like? What do, uh, what's important to you as far as friends go when you're hanging out in their basement like we were talking about?
Yeah, well, I'm gonna be honest, uh, we talked a little bit before we turned on the camera about being a 24/7 counselor or not, right? And, uh, whether that's a, a thing and most of my days are like long, full of council days, you know, there isn't, there isn't a lot of that.
You're treating this like a full-time job?
Pretty much, yeah. Um, and you know, my other, my other side gig is kind of very flexible, so I can spend more time on, on, uh, council, but as far as like hanging out in a basement, watching, uh, hockey, that's usually what we're doing. Right. Go over to some friend's house, watch some hockey, you know, they'll be drinking, I'll be drinking, uh, water.
You don't drink?
No, no, but, uh, I just want to clarify.
I'm always skeptical of, uh, oh yeah, the kind of ones in that class as usual. I'm always skeptical of people that don't do drugs or drink. They always like, it makes me go, whoa, whoa, what's wrong with you? What do you mean? You get a problem?
Yeah. I think it started because I was cheap in high school. I was like, how are you getting money for this expensive alcohol? My word. But, uh, and then I was just like, well, I can't break the streak now. It's been, you know.
Right.
But, uh.
So never drank, never tasted it?
No, never, never got into.
Never had a, never had the desire to. Well, good for you. Many people struggle with it, so, and, uh, are you, uh, are you a coffee drinker?
I recently kind of got into it.
I've fallen back too after 25 years of, uh, abstinence from that evil drug, but that's a drug too, so we'll get you on that.
Yeah.
He uses coffee relentlessly. He's an addict. Mike Britton, coffee user. So, uh, on city council, uh, I'm just gonna help you introduce yourself here. Chair of the Economic Sustainability Committee, Vice Chair of the Budget Committee. That must be interesting. We can talk a little bit about that. Uh, Negregistic Airport Commission, Negregional Transportation Steering Committee, and Chair of the nineteen seven, uh, twenty seventeen Youth Forum Planning Committee, uh, outside council. You manage properties. It's should be a pretty good gig. There's not too many people in agri, property managing, I don't think. Habitat for Humanity Salvage Team. Uh, Central Community Church Volunteer. I know that because I've seen you around quite a bit there. Junior Chamber, JCI Junior Chamber International Member and Toastmasters Member. Wow. So how many speeches you got under your belt at Toasties?
I kind of just joined a few months ago, so I've done two. I did two right in a row.
You did your icebreaker?
I did my icebreaker, which was fun.
And it's like a five minute about like who, who's Bill, uh, Bill here. There's my first one. Mike Britton, Mike Britton, Mike Britton, not Bill. Hey, Bill Britton, if you're watching.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Should've worn a name tag.
Yeah. So, uh, you got the icebreaker done and then, uh, what was your second one?
Um, the second one, I actually talked about, um, well, sorry, I'm just trying to think. So I did my Scottish trip. I did a tour around Scotland a few years ago. I talked about that, but I actually think that was in my icebreaker.
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, I did it on Freemasonry. That's what it was. My second one was on Freemasonry.
Really? Are you a Freemason?
I am, yeah.
Wow. I don't know anything about that. I'm kind of surprised.
Well, then I won't bore you, but, uh, yeah, no, my, uh, my grandfather.
Just another cult, right? Basically?
I wouldn't call it a cult, but, um, yeah, it's a, it's a brotherhood, but I, I, I love history. Um, part of the introduction that you skipped there was that I have a degree in classics, classical studies, ancient Greece and Rome, and, um, so I love history and there's a lot of tradition. There's a lot of history to that. The oldest fraternity in the world, not fraternity as in like frat house partying, you know, but, uh, uh, brotherhood. And so my grandfather was a Mason. My great-grandfather was a Mason, so I figured I, I really wanted to get involved.
Cool.
And I'd only, I've only been one. I actually, um, went in maybe a week before I got on council. So it was really a life-changing like week. I, I turned 24.
It was my first election too.
Yeah, I turned 24. I got elected at city council and I became a Mason all in like period of two weeks.
Wow. Like a rebirth. So again, let's get back to, I'll let you just introduce yourself and your personality type and what, what makes you tick and, uh, so like tell us about, uh, who Mike Britton is.
Well, you're probably not gonna like this answer, but like a lot of what I do is politics. Like a lot of what I do is politics, like getting out there.
That doesn't offend me at all. I can't look away. Cannot look away, man.
Yeah, like a lot of my personality is, is that what you see, like out in, in, on the, the community, like going to events, uh, the committees, you know, that I'm sitting on, like that's, that's a lot of what I'm doing and I enjoy it. Like that's the thing is I like what I do, so I don't mind that it's all, almost all encompassing.
Right.
So, yeah.
So then if you're just to put bullet points, let's say you're, we're doing a, hey, a dating profile. Maybe I can help you with that. You're talking about yesterday how you're still single. You don't want to be that way. Uh, so you know, I, I wrote not a dating profile because I'm scared to be seen online even. I remember, I was single many years ago. I, uh, I, I jumped on Plenty of Fish or whatever, which is probably the, you know, the bottom feeding of the dating sites. I don't know.
I've never, I've never tried.
So I jumped on, I made this profile and, which was hilarious. I had the best time writing this profile and I think I, I switched it over. It's my about me now on my Facebook, which is probably about five years old because it still talks about.
Recycling of.
Yeah, yeah. Just, uh, it talks about my mother and whatever, when she was still alive and stuff like that, so. I had the greatest time running that. And then, uh, my babysitter, one of my babysitters from when I used to live on Two's place in St. Catharines, so it's probably, well, we moved there in grade four. So, um, Sue sends me a message, "Oh, I didn't ever expect to see you out here." I'm like, delete account right away.
You didn't like the babysitter thing?
The stigma. No, no, I love the babysitter thing, but the stigmatism that goes along with the online dating, so I, I never did it. But anyways, I have a habit of sidetracking myself. Uh, so yeah, just give me your bullet points. I am, uh, if you're just gonna say Christian. I am pro-life. I am political. I'm, finish that out for us.
Put those things on a dating profile, man. That's gonna be like a boring.
For our listeners, because you know, I, I like this format from a standpoint that one, we don't have to check our watch and go, oh, and then talk, listen to a sponsor. Also, I can talk shit about the sponsors and not fear retribution from, uh, the higher ups.
I was gonna say, you've never had any experience with that, eh?
In the corp, oh yeah, I got a little experience with that. And, uh, so I, I like this format because one, I think that the local media has, um, had a little, uh, problem lately with objective local issue coverage. And, and you can't do any of this type of thing in the paper. I mean, you're getting to know someone like this just is impossible in print. And then when it, when it, uh, compares to terrestrial radio, you gotta break every nine minutes, long commercials, that, that flow gets broken up. So we got a whole lot of time to go in depth, so I don't mind if you just take the time to, to wind out and, and I think it will help, uh, the electorate, which is important to you if you're running next time, uh, or even just people that are interested in following politics, maybe not even in St. Catharines, want to see what St. Catharines are up to or what Mike Britton stands for. Then, uh, we can, we have a chance to go get really personal here and, and talk about whatever we want in depth. So that's, uh, kind of why I'm doing this and, uh, you know, it's, it's a form of self-expression obviously for me too, but I'm a political addict. Uh, I'm trying to, uh, I'm trying to heal myself.
Don't do that. Come join us, Jim.
You know what? It, it really takes away from paying the bills for me, right? So I can't, I'm not selling houses when I'm sitting with Mike Britton for two hours in my makeshift studio down here.
I don't mind if you like do a few, you know, shots to the camera.
Ricochet's getting one all the time because I love their water and I just give them free plugs all the time. So thank you, Ricochet Water. You changed my life. I never drank Aro again. But, uh, yeah, just spend a little bit, you know, more going in depth about who you are and what's important to you.
So I'll actually tell you a story. We started off talking a little bit about, uh, Rick Dykstra and I've got a story about him and I got a story that actually involves you. Um, I've never told you this story, but it's kind of an interesting one. So, um, in 2006, I was in high school. I was actually in civics class.
C chord?
C chord. I was a C chordian. Yeah. Yeah, I was in all the plays.
Strong connection with the C chord kids.
Yeah, I was in the plays. I was in the, I have no musical talent, but I was there, you know?
Okay, yeah.
But, um, anyway, so I was in civics class in two thousand, uh, ten, uh, six and, uh, as part of civics class, there was the federal election going on that year.
Right.
And we were all assigned a political party.
Right.
Um, that year. And I was assigned to the Liberal Party, uh, in my class. And out of the groups, we were to elect a leader from amongst us, right? So I actually became leader of the Liberal Party in my grade 10 civics class.
Okay.
And each of the leaders were able to go meet their candidate because the candidates were coming to my high school for a debate. Now, a lot of the names in the 2006 election are quite familiar even still today. So we had the incumbent Liberal, which was Walt LaStuca, so that was who I got to meet. Um, there was the Conservative Rick Dykstra running for the first time federally. There was the NDP Jeff Birch was the NDP candidate.
Boo, NDP Birch.
And there was a Green candidate guy, uh, some Jim Fannin or something like that. So, um, yeah, that's just actually kind of my first exposure to, uh, to politics in general. Um, and I, we all got to go to the staff room and meet the, you know, your candidate and I don't know if, can't remember if Walt LaStuca was late or, I don't know what happened, but I ended up talking with Rick Dykstra. It was the very first time I ever met Rick.
Wow.
Two thousand six. I was 16 years old. Um, and I chatted with him and, and I'll, I'll be honest, I was quite impressed and especially when we got into the debate. Because this Green Party guy, he kept bringing up legalization of marijuana.
Oh, did I? Yeah.
All the time. And so the kids went nuts, right?
Well, I know how to play to the kids for sure, but it's one of our best policies. If I could say hour like he's still at the party.
But, um, I'm pretty sure, uh, I'm actually pretty sure you won the student vote that year.
I did.
Yeah.
One of the few things I've ever won in politics ever.
So there, you're elected at C chord.
Was elected at C chord.
Um, anyway, so what I was actually impressed about Rick, not, not a shot at you, but, um, he was, you know, the students were not impressed that, um, he wasn't for the legalization of marijuana, but like he stuck to his principles. He was like, like this is what I believe. This is what my party believes and, and he stuck to it even though, you know, it was not popular in that school. That was for sure. And I was quite impressed by that, you know, um.
Is that what made you conservative? Do you think you already had conservative values?
To be honest, I was 16. I didn't have any like political values at that point. I was not involved in any way. Um, I, I think it had an impression on me. I think that the whole debate, the whole experience, the whole watching of that got me involved in.
Give you a little bit of a hunger for it or even tweaked an interest in you that you didn't know you had?
Yeah, like, uh, before that, like I really, I'll say I was not involved.
Family political?
Not at all. Not at all. They, uh, they used to be liberals and they flipped conservative, like they're not, you know, out, um, out there, you know, campaigning or anything like that. So no, no political, uh, background in my family.
My parents wouldn't even tell each other who they voted for. That's how private they were with their political stance. And, you know, I often joke, don't joke, is, you know, I think, you know, if we're that way with our religion a little bit more, like I'm, I used to be intensely private with my religion. I'm a little bit more open about it now because I have so much fun assisting at church, you know, running the cameras and, and doing video director, but yeah, my parents wouldn't even tell each other, uh, tell each other who they voted for, which I found was strange and, uh, but you know, some people take that stuff very seriously. And I remember one time we came home, there was a, uh, an election sign on my lawn, uh, on our lawn and my dad went nuts. Maybe not, maybe it wasn't the party he wanted or maybe it didn't matter, but he was not pleased. He's like, you didn't put that thing on my lawn. No way. And we took it down right quick. So yeah, different, different strokes obviously, but, uh, it's funny to hear, hear you say, you know, at 16 years old, like boom, this is the first guy I talked to. And I always wonder, I mean, we've talked and thanks to Andy Petrowski and Tony Quirk and, and the previous musicians that have come on, Jihad, Hia and MJ Blake and all my boys that have come on the show who've, uh, constantly talked about this personality type that is different. It's, it's almost like a different hardwiring in the brain. Obviously we know men and women are different. You can't say that publicly now or you lose your job basically if you say.
Actually, I, it's a quick side tangent. Um, I was doing a tour of a new laboratory at Brock University and it was, um, the neuro mechanics lab. They do things, um, you know, various studyings of different diseases and things like that. And one guy was doing his thesis right now on, um, the differences in men and women's brain, like physiological differences. And I actually asked him, I took him aside, I, I held up the whole tour. I took him aside and I just said, are you getting any like political kind of pushback on this? And, and he actually said, no. Um, I was really surprised to hear that, but he said like in, in the scientific community, um, it's just accepted, like you can see them, like here are the physiological differences. Um, and I was like, really? And he goes, we do have to be very careful though in our language, talking about the difference between gender and sex.
I'm struggling with the difference of that. Do you, can you explain the difference between gender and sex?
It's, it's, I, I'm not an expert on this, so like I, I, I don't know enough to like speak authoritatively, but he just said, you know, we have to be careful in, in our language, but the, when the facts say, you know, there's differences between the, the brains, um, cause he's actually, this is specific research is showing that the firing of the, the, um, losing my words here, the electric, like the, the neurons, um, are actually different rates for men and women and that affects muscle growth and that affects muscle usage and things like that. And so that's where he's studying right now.
That made an impact on you somehow?
Well, this was just like two weeks ago.
Oh, okay.
It was very recent, so it was just.
What, what did you take away from that? Just that it was interesting that somebody was even doing a study into it?
Yeah, yeah, like I.
I mean, because the, the Google memo was, you know, all the craze. It was all up in the media forever. Well, except locally, we haven't seemed to talk about it at all, but I mean, I read that Google memo and, you know, it's too bad that whoever it was, Gawker or whoever first broke the story, uh, put the title anti-diversity memo. It wasn't an anti-diversity memo at all. It was talking about the lack of diversity in STEM. Uh, science, technology, what is it? Uh, whatever it is, mathematics, um, and I couldn't disagree with any of it. I mean, we're just hardwired differently and, you know, so, but saying that right now, I mean, it's pretty obvious men are stronger, uh, than women, uh, you know, after puberty, when the testosterone jolt kicks in. And then that fires a whole different chain of events down, you know, uh, we, we probably aren't as fearful as for our safety as women are, right? That makes sense. Why? Because, well, because the world is a more dangerous place for women, both physically and then when you add sexually into it too, the, the repercussions and the impacts of, uh, unwanted sexual encounter, let's say, are vastly, uh, greater for a woman because obviously, uh, pregnancy is an issue. Men can walk away with it. They don't have that issue. And in today's, even in a rich country like what we live in today, single, uh, mother pregnancies, you, I mean, that's not a good way to start your life. So anyway, uh, I'm going down a road.
Guy, like I, I never had to really worry about that.
Right.
And it's, uh.
So it, it makes sense that if, if, if the world is a more fearful place for women, then they're gonna have a different way of looking at it. And I don't think that's, that's incorrect or improper or, uh.
To be honest, I, I, I think that like that's, that having a different way of looking at it might not be that we're wired different. That might be just practical, right? You have to have a different way of looking at it, right?
Definitely. But then I'm always, always interested too about the way the left and right have this different personality type. And I don't know if it's a wiring in the brain so much as it is, is maybe, maybe a conditioning, but no, I think this stuff is biological. I think you're born with it. And conservatives tend to think a certain way about certain things. They like their borders. They like, and I mean borders as far as, you know, theoretical borders. Uh, uh, but then no functional borders too, like immigration. Uh, you know, conservatives are usually tight on it. They want immigration tightened up. Whereas the liberals think outside the box. They don't have borders. They're freewheeling, they're free spirits and, and then functionally, when it comes to immigration, they're like, nah, let them all in. So, and, and there's nothing wrong with that. In fact, uh, the thing I've been struggling with a lot lately is this alt feminism hating on men and forgetting that we got here together and that we need each other to move forward. I mean, women are the most important part of the human race. They give birth. Like hello. I mean, obviously you can't do it without us, but.
It's why most cultures, you know, back in the day usually had a matriarch, usually had a, a mother goddess.
Right.
You know, the female was the most important part of.
And you know what? We're not really gonna figure out what this whole bringing women into politics in the workforce, because it's only been, you know, 30, 40, how many years since, you know, women have gotten their freedom and I'm not opposed to giving them freedom because well, uh, economic prosperity is directly correlated to these freedoms. So duh, like we want them to, to live and be happy, but, and it's funny when you say, you know, back in the day, when, when we ruled in tribes and even after that, you know, uh, I think I remember hearing, uh, Camille Paglia. I don't know if you know her, but she, she's a brilliant, um, rapid speaking, uh, feminist. And I still consider myself a feminist, but I'm really frustrated with this new age of feminism that is really man blaming. Uh, and, um, Paglia was talking about, you know, she, she's Italian or both her parents came straight from Italy and then she remembers as a child, and she's about 70 years old now, that the women would take the laundry up the hill to the, to the, the riverbed or the spring or what have you to wash the clothes. And there was always, you know, 10 or 15 of them and they rolled in their own tribe. There's no men. And that the elders actually held power. The elders were the ones that knew about childbirth and knew about, uh, giving birth and, and about, uh, uh, you know, nurturing your ba, your, your child. And all this generational, um, information was down, handed down so that they had true elders. And that they were the happiest people around because they, they often finished other pe, uh, other women's sentences. They, they, they were very intimate with each other. And singing and whistling all the way, while they're doing basically like chores and men have their own chores. But that the structure all broke down and now you, you see that the, the elders don't hold the power in the groups anymore. They're actually more outcasts than they are accepted with the wisdom and, and, uh, all that kind of thing. So I thought that, that was.
What culture was this?
Well, she's Italian, but I think it's, it's, it's pretty much the same in any culture where, you know, we are tribal beings. We are aggressive, violent creatures as humans, especially men. And, and I think that's okay to say, yeah. Men have a violent, aggressive nature. They, they need to protect their families. You know, there's a whole bunch of things and I don't think there's anything wrong with saying, hey, we're different. We're better at different things and it's same with the races. I mean, you know, you've got different races that are better at doing different things. I, like, why is that racist to say that Asians have a proclivity to math or science or, or what have you, or, you know, black people are better at whatever, or white people are better or whatever. What are we gonna do? Start gonna institute in quotas? We're gonna start going into, oh no, there's too many, uh, female nurses here. We need men. No, we don't need diversity at all costs. We're not equal. We're not equal between the races or between the sexes and, and but.
I just, I haven't seen, like you, you're talking about, you know, this culture as a, uh, better at math or whatever the case may be. I haven't seen any scientific evidence on that one. Like I just haven't, I know there's, you can say anecdotal evidence or whatever the case may be. As far as, as I said, the, the men and women thing, I just learned about a paper. I also have a medical science degree. That's my other degree at university and like I've looked into this and so, yeah, like I can say physiologically here, the difference, uh, between men and women. That makes sense. There are some differences, uh, twitch muscles, you know, in, in, uh, uh, black people and, and things like that. So again, there are some physi, like physiological differences that you can point to, but I try not to speak in broad strokes unless there's like, there's, there's the evidence, right?
Well, in this day and age, those broad strokes will get you in, in trouble with the politically correct police and that's a powerful left wing lobby right now. And we'll talk about integrity commissioners and, and the tools of the left right now. I mean, I'm ashamed of the left right now. I'm a left-leaning guy, but what they're pulling off with some of these, um, you know, invasions of freedom of speech and stuff like that, it's really, it's, it's got me really concerned that we're going down the wrong way.
So then you were just, you, you talked a little bit and it's an interesting theory out there that, you know, the, the left and right is actually biological and that, you know, it's, it's hardwired into you. Um, you just said you're a left-leaning guy and then I've watched your past interviews with, uh, you know, Petrowski and, and Quirk and, and you're saying that, you know, you tend to be maybe switching a little bit. Um, how do you kind of, if it's hardwired, then how do you explain you?
Well, I, I think that I, I'm open and I took the, the, the big five personality test, knowing yourself. I think it's, uh, Jordan Peterson's site. It's like 10 bucks.
Is, is that?
It's a hundred questions.
Jordan Peterson, that's the guy for, the professor with the pronouns?
Yeah, I think he's one of the most brilliant men.
I just watched, I, I really haven't watched too much of him, but just last week, a friend recommended me his podcast with, uh, Joe Rogan.
Oh.
Him and Joe Rogan sat down for like two and a half hours.
A couple of times.
Yeah.
He was on with, uh, Weinstein, uh, Burt, Burt Weinstein, uh, who was at, uh, that, uh, place in the States there where they, they were saying, uh, they were, they were having a day where all, they, they didn't want the white teachers to show up. And they were kind of saying, don't show up to work. And he's like, well, no, that's racist. You know, it's racist. Like not even in reverse, you know what I mean? So. Um, anyways, I, I ran through this test. It's a hundred questions and then it shows you what your tendencies are as far as person, the big five, uh, personality traits, which is openness to experience. Uh, openness is what I said about the borders. They're freewheeling. They're the left-leaning people. There's a social, uh, you know, a little bit socialism. Like I have a healthy respect for a little bit of socialism in our, in our society. I think we need it. And without it, you know, the conservatives are like, no, every man for himself and less government, no welfare and stuff like that. And that's actually, uh, that falls under conscientiousness.
Well, so just, this is, um, different. One of the books that I have right, right now, uh, just beside my bed actually is a book called Tommy Douglas Speaks. And it's a compilation of a lot of Tommy Douglas', um, speeches all through his career. And for those who don't know, Tommy Douglas being the NDP premier in, was it?
The father of Medicare?
Yeah, like that's, he invented Medicare. Like he invented our universal healthcare. Um, and so I don't think anyone in today's Canadian culture would say that's a bad thing. Very few of us, right? We're, like, we're proud. We tell people around the world, we have universal healthcare and we, we brag about it. And it's thanks to this NDP, um, you know, premier. And, uh, yeah, like I think if you're left-leaning, right-leaning right now, you're still in favor of it. I, I guess there has been some conversations though about privatization on some cases, but it's a very. Yeah, I, I don't know.
Quicker access, sometimes better quality.
Yeah, but like I would say that that's, that's become part of our culture, the universal healthcare and it's a very socialistic idea and it's, it's a great one.
Right. So yeah, I'd encourage you to go by and take the personality, uh, test. I think it's knowingyourself.com. I'm sorry you couldn't Google Jordan Peterson, but he's bright, but no, it's, it's, it's a shame actually because I've been called snowflake meat, like snowflake. And I'm leaning more right, you know, when I, when I started agreeing with a Ben Shapiro who's pro-life, who's an Orthodox Jew, um, you know, which I don't even understand that religion. I didn't grow up with anyone that, that was close to me that was that religion. But when I start agreeing with the likes of, of Ben Shapiro and basically where it falls in line to the free speech and he was brave enough to stand up and say, you're born a boy or a girl? There's not 75 different sexes that you can be born. So, you know, putting you on a passport port, cause I think somewhere in Canada, I think in BC right now, they just put on a driver's license or something unknown for sex.
Did you hear?
I don't, I don't get that, man. And so for him to say, uh, you know what? You can go through hormone replacement treatment. You can, you can install different sexual parts into your body if you want and I'm fine. Do whatever you want. Like I'm not, you know?
Kind of sound libertarian.
Love whoever you want, do whatever you want, but you're, that doesn't make you the opposite sex, even if you change your parts and even if you take all these hormones that are from the opposite sex, you're still a boy. And I was like, what? No! And now we've got these 75 different. And I was like, what? No. And now we've got these seventy-five different genders. Uh, someone wrote a thesis paper on that he identifies with hippopotamuses. Uh, I don't, I don't get that. Like, you're born a bo- boy or a girl. And then it really frustrated me when uh, Bill C sixteen came out because of the freedom of speech. Implications and I don't think we'll actually see the full ramifications of that for, you know, many years down the road, if any. But I'm I'm fearful that this mandatory use of made up pronouns is is just the thin edge of the wedge. You know, it, these are not popular things to say right now, you know, and then so the liberals were so frustrated and I I talked to. I think it was Quirk a little bit about this. The liberals trotted a ten year old biological boy. Who identifies as a girl at ten. And they were talking about forcing him into a female puberty with estrogen. And I thought to myself. This is, this is fucked up, man. This is, this is child abuse and I know I'll have the haters and I've been called everything now because of it. Of my take on, no, you're a boy or a girl. And if you wanna change your sex, well, change your parts and stuff and you don't feel like you're. I can't even imagine having a disassociation with my sexual identity. I can't because of. I'm a boy, I've always liked girls. And I can't imagine how painful that must be to look down and go, no, I don't identify with that. I, in fact, I identify with the opposite. And so, but they trotted out this kid named Charlie. And when I heard that Charlie. Was getting to be forced into a fe- female puberty, I mean, you can't even get a freaking tattoo until you're eighteen. And I'm not, I don't understand it. So I'm not saying, and and this is for the family to decide and I wasn't there or anything and maybe this kid absolutely. You know, is is sure that he was born the wrong sex. But to have him in the family make that decision before he's even hit his natural puberty as a boy. It struck me the wrong way and it left me feeling like that's scary stuff, man.
It's, again, like I always like to go back, you know, what do the facts and evidence say? What do the scientific community say? Maybe it's just because that was my my first training.
That doesn't help you any here.
No, but.
People are always saying, well, you don't understand. It's the parents and the kid know best, you know?
Well, yeah, you're right. I guess from uh, speaking to people, it may not help, but to to actually look at the facts and evidence, you can see that. Your brain isn't fully developed until.
Twenty-five.
Yeah, in your twenties. And so, um, that's one of the arguments against where should, if we're legalizing marijuana, where do you put it? Cause it can affect your brain development. Um, so that's just one of the topics that I've heard in the marijuana legalization. A discussion is what age do you put the legalization? Cause it can, there again has been studies that it can affect brain development if you take it while you're fourteen or something like that. And so, in this case, though, you're talking about, like, the the child's brain has not fully developed, right? Like, he hasn't gone through that.
And specifically, I think it's the frontal cortex that is responsible for. Impact in consequence. And that's why we do so many crazy things in our twenties before that frontal cortex is fully developed. Because we don't give a shit what happens. That part of our brain isn't fully developed to the point that we can understand. The i- impact and I heard it being compared the other day improperly, I think, to being drunk. Drunks will actually. Reason out the impact and just say, fuck it, I don't care. Whereas in your youth, and I mean, this is probably different with different sexes and and different people. Um, yeah, that that is just not there, so. It makes sense to say, well, no, you have to be the age majority or eighteen years old to get a tattoo of purple, but this is permanent. It's not even permanent. It's ink on your skin. But then we're saying, okay, well, if you don't feel, if you feel like a girl today, then you can be a girl today. But if you feel like any of these other different genders over here, there's seventy-five of them, what? And and then you gotta call me my specific pronoun and this is where I get turned on to Peterson or introduced to Peterson. You're not gonna make me use, number one, you're not gonna make my speech, uh, like man, compel me. To say certain things. You can't fire, you can't yell fire in a crowded theater. That's against the law. That's something you can't say. You can't, and I don't know what, why we needed a a law for this, but you can't deny the Holocaust. Okay. All right, that makes sense. The Holocaust happened. It was a horrible, horrible thing perpetuated by sane human beings, just like you and me. You know, the Hitler wasn't just a crazy, you know, he was. He was sane. He was a human being just like us. But then to flip it around.
Vegetarian, actually.
Yeah. Uh, but to flip it around and say that you must say this. Uh, I think is horribly dangerous and. Oh, a speaker, I've just been on a deep dive for this because I'm an information junkie. You know, when Ms. Came to the forefront. And I I'm not even sure this is a women's lib issue more than it was a functional issue. Uh, in the English language, there is no. What do you call the the Ms. And Mr. What are what are those? I can't remember what those.
Like the fulfer, master of the house?
Yeah, no, it's just the, what they call, it's not a pronoun or is it? But.
Oh, just like a title or?
We had master for young boys. We have miss for young unmarried girls. And then misses for married girls and mister. But we didn't have the, we didn't have a word for the unmarried adult female.
Right.
So, and it kinda did come in through the back door, I think, with the women's lib who were saying, no, we want. We don't wanna be referred to as someone's husband. We want a Ms. But that was more a function of of language that was failing us. It didn't, you know, in in. English language, we don't have male and female for doctor. You're just doctor. You know, Mrs. Doctor or Mr. Doctor, you know what I mean? And so, that was, I think, a a function. Of the failing of, you know, a a descriptor that wasn't available. So that, so Ms. Came in and it was accepted because it was accepted by everyone. Because it was, yeah, eh, yeah. But. Saying that I identify with a stuffed animal sexually or or my gender. My biological, you know, I was, uh, I'm a Teddy Rumskin and you'll call me kin instead of him. Makes me horribly um, afraid that. Someone's gonna come before the Human Rights Tribunal, similar to your Integrity Commissioner. And and just decide that you're a homophobic hateful bigot. And that you owe someone a large chunk of cash. And if you don't pay that large chunk of cash, you go to jail. So if I misuse the, or if I use the improper pronoun on a rental application. Or you rent my house and I call you her because you look like a girl to me, but you've already told me that you wanna be referred to as Z. Now you, now I'm discriminating again, you know, that, so, I mean, this has been a long road and so I've been. Tweaked by it a little bit and then Jordan Peterson came on Rogan for this exact issue. So he's a hate-filled xenophobic. Homophobic bigot racist. Uh, this is what he's been called. And now, if I take any of those. Ways of being or those thoughts that you're born male or female and there's really not much you can do about it afterwards, no. You're 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 snowflake, you're racist intolerant bigot and I'm getting it all too. So, and he's getting it as far as. You know, intolerance all the way around. And it's funny, man, I reached out. I was, you know, struggling the other day. And I reached out to a friend of mine who's a left leaning gay man and said, hey. I think I think we need to get coffee.
Yeah, help me out here.
Yeah, because I'm struggling. With my right leaning views on this specific issue because normally I'm tolerant. And you know what my tolerant gay friend said to me? Fuck you, basically. Yeah, you hang around, you think it's okay to hang around with the uh, the Annie Petrowski's. Andy's not my friend. I've never even had a beer with Andy. I talked to Andy about politics sometimes, had him on the show because I think he's. Interesting from the standpoint of his journey. He's certainly not perfect. And but if I am, and 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 I said to this guy, listen, don't roll up to me at the opening of the pack and go, hey, how's your buddy doing now? Referring to Petrowski, like he's, he's not my buddy and that's not fair to say in public, you know, like he does something stupid like, oh, you're, you know. And that's what he came back with me, uh, to me with is um, no. As long as you hang around and you think that isms are okay and uh, racism and bigotry and homophobe, you know, then we're done. Forget the coffee, forget the podcast. And I went. Like, I was heartbroken because this guy's been a friend for a long time. He's a friend of my mother's and. You know, I I shouldn't say friend because we don't hang around as somebody I respect and whatever. So here's a guy. That preaches tolerance and love everywhere, you know, and I think that's what Trump's kind of given us is. Dude, we're all racist intolerant hateful bigots at some level and we're working on it and we're getting better. But uh, that's our survival mode, man. If we didn't fear. The stranger or the 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 man with a different colored skin or language or religion. Uh, then we wouldn't have, we wouldn't be here. This is what's kept us alive, this tribalism, this this, no. Like, when we rolled up against a color, a tribe of a different color, w- we tried to exterminate them completely. Uh, we didn't invite them over for dinner and have babies with them. So I think this is pretty natural and if if we don't start the conversation with going, okay. You know what? We're all kinda designed this way. Comes from a millennia of evolution. Um, but we're getting better and we're working on it and we got a long way to go. I think if we start this conversation there, then we got a a a better discussion.
It's, it's really a shame that, like, you were trying to educate yourself and like, I guess you lost that opportunity. Cause like, I think that's. That shows an openness, as you said, but it shows like I'm trying to learn, right? You know, I went to a few recently, um. Events put on by O Perg Brock. I don't know if you know what O Perg Brock is. I actually don't know what the acronym stands for, but. They're into social justice and they're into these these type of issues, uh, racism, uh, gender issues, uh, diversity and the the importance of. Of um, that and and I actually learned quite a bit. So like, I'm trying to educate myself, just like you were, like, hey, I'm struggling. Teach me, right?
Right.
So I kinda go and I'd be quiet and I wouldn't say anything because I'm not an expert on this, but.
Opening your mouth when you're not educated is have, we all know what happens.
Well, so that's why, as I said, I always try and look at what are the facts, what is, you know, the science say, but like, what are, what are, what are the uh, the issues? Um, but you were just talking about tribalism and I'll give you a little story uh, from my university years, which I really think encapsulate this uh. When I was in university, I lived in residence and I went to Western and it was a, we had an amazing O week. I think we have. One of the biggest O weeks in Canada, I'm pretty sure. And it was just incredible and. It was interesting because each day or each activity was structured in, you know, you had your floor. I was four west. That was my floor. Four West Delaware, you know, Hall. And so you were with your floor and that was your group. That was your tribe. And you you sometimes competed against the other floors and that was your tribe. But then the next day, it was your residence. It was this residence versus this one. It was Delaware Hall versus Alumni Hall. And then everyone in Delaware was my friend, right? I never met this guy, but he was my best friend right there because we were going up against Alumni Hall. And then the next day, it went faculty based. So it was everyone in science versus everyone in in social science, right? And then it expanded and you're like, okay, these are all new people. And and then finally, the the culmination was homecoming where. It was Western was playing football against whoever, right? And it was this entire university was your tribe. And so it was really cool to see how. Depending on what context you're in, you know, how it can expand, because it definitely can expand, or how tiny it can be, your floor, your roommate, you know, very small. And it was really a cool experience and I think they developed it. I was so impressed how they've developed their programming because each day you build on it. Each day you build more friends, more people and I don't know, by the end of it, you just felt like you were a part of a team. You were part of the university. Um, so that was a great experience for me.
The identity politics is is fractionated us into the, I mean, you can fraction it right right down to the the individual like. So, black people are oppressed. Okay, so black women are more oppressed. Okay, but black women with uh. That are single with children, they're more oppressed. Black women, single children that are have autism. Like, I mean, we, and this is what we forget and and you know, it was just tweaked in me. It's like. You know, when you leave your country and you see one of your hometown people.
Yes.
Across the world somewhere and you're like, hey, now you you've seen these persons a hundred times. In your own community, never spoken to them.
Yeah.
Not even so much as a hello or a greeting or, but you might know their name, you might know where they work, you might know who their kids are. But you've never spoken to them because it's this little, you know, it's, we're not, we're getting more social, but you know. We're not that social. I mean, we're social creatures, but we could do much better on it. So. So, yeah, what I'm just thinking of is like, when you see that person across the world in Italy, you're like, hey, countrymen. All of a sudden, and this is the fractionation of the identities is pulling us away as we fight over left and right. And we, as we fight as men and women, we forget, we're human, period. We share more as human beings. It doesn't matter the race, the color of the religion or the sex. Then we differ.
Yep.
And that's, I think, what what's been lost. And I think this Trump experiment has really. Uh, like the gap is hugely wide right now. Like even before Trump came in, the left and the right, the gap wasn't as. Big as it is now. Now the ideological and the and the political gap is wider than it's ever been. And extremism on both sides is far more evident than it's ever been. This Antifa or Antifa or one, I don't even know what to call it. But it makes me sick to see these people running around in masks. This is not activism.
Yeah.
This is not standing up for free speech. Because free speech means even if you're a fucking complete tool. And you think that Nazism is the religion of the day or the way that we should proceed. You're you're obviously a tool, but you should have the right to be a tool in public. You shouldn't have to go to jail. Or have to pay someone cost because you hurt their fucking feelings. Like, so. I think we've just become, the political correctness has gone so radical. And it and you know, always compare it to the the pendulum, man, when it swings back, sometimes it cuts hard.
Yeah.
And it's gonna swing back and maybe it's swinging this way right now because we swung so hard left under Obama or, well, we didn't really swing left, but.
Yeah, I was gonna say like a uh, Democratic uh, American is still far righter than our conservatives, right? So, just if you look at the spectrum.
So I think it's an interesting conversation that that needs to be had and and we're kinda going down the road of identity politics and that's not why I brought you in. Wanted to talk a little bit of politics.
Good chat.
Yeah. Uh, my guest is Mike Britton. I'm Jim Fannin. You can find us on SoundCloud and all the podcast. Uh, platforms in addition to Twitter and Facebook. Um, tell us, uh, NPCA comes before council. So it's Tuesday morning right now, as you Facebook livers know. I heard there was the same twelve people demonstrating the NPCA out there again. Uh, can you speak to that? Cause I've never seen the protest, but is it the same twelve people and no more?
Actually, um, I had to go to count, had to. No, I was at City Hall about five P M. Because. We had the Trillium Awards last night before council. Trillium Awards are for gardens, you know, in the city.
In chamber.
Um, it was actually just outside the chambers in in the other room, but, um, so anyway, I missed the protest completely. Um, I didn't. Like walk through it. I was up up there, so I don't know the size of it. Uh, I did see a picture, I think it was Melinda Chevers from Niagara this week, uh, tweeted one out and. Um, it looked like it was bigger than the usual twelve, but I wasn't, I didn't see it. I'll be honest. Now, the chamber was filled and the interesting thing about this was, there was, I'm not gonna say half the chamber, but there was a third of the chamber. And they were all wearing, I love the NPCA um, stickers. And they were, um, there was some unionized staff, there was some non-unionized staff. Uh, they brought out, you know, some of their family or whatever and. Um, and then the other, you know, kinda was this side and then this side was, uh, some of the protesters came up. A lot of them didn't. Um, but, yeah, so it was an interesting dynamic that last night, that's for sure.
What's your take on the NPCA? Do we need to get involved here? Is this just uh, Andy Petrowski would say this is the politics of distraction? Let's let's get to homelessness. Let's get to taxes. Let's get to water rates. Let's, you know, the NPCA and I mean. I was kinda tweaked by the NPCA because of the the issue on thundering waters. I feel like they got caught with their pants down a couple of times. And Tony Quirk was really good about addressing all those issues and I kinda learned a little bit from him from the standpoint that he doesn't think it's a bad deal that. Uh, Barrett got hired from the board to staff, happens all the time. That's not cronyism, okay?
Well, you see it, to be honest, where you see it the most is in not-for-profits all the time. Um, and like ones that nobody would question their motives. You know, places like community care or something like that where.
Why would you not question their motives?
I don't know.
Still cronyism.
I'm just saying, like, that's, that's, i- it's very common. I've seen it.
Right.
So.
But I just, when I read the Code of Conflict and Code of Conflict says you may not benefit in any way, shape or form from being on this board. That job as a CEO or a director or what have you is a huge benefit, but. Uh, and Tony made the point that no, as long as you don't vote for yourself, it's no conflict. I'm like, oh, I don't get it. And then he, he really uh, articulately spoke to. The level of expert um, expertise in some of these board members. They're familiar already with the people around the table, but they have a specific expertise into the field that they are applying for. So, I don't get it, but what's your, what's your take?
But so, um, to, yeah, to get back to the NPCA, uh, I disagree with you on one thing that you've said in the past and I think we've talked about it before. And that's, well, this is a distraction. This is a waste of time. Um, I can, you know, chew gum and walk. I can do two things at once. Like, I don't mind spending time on some issues. That's why we're elected. Um, so I, I've, I've openly said, like, if you have. Um, so I, I've, I've openly said, like, if you have an issue, bring it to me, you know, like I want to learn.
Said that about the NPCA.
No, no, not about the NPCA, but I'm just saying in general, like dual direct, so I think, if it's, if it's an issue for the people, I'll discuss it. Fair enough, yep. So that's, that's where I sit on this, so this is clearly an issue for uh, as you said, the same twelve people, but it's an issue for some people. Um, we got uh, I'm just trying to remember, like maybe seven or eight emails uh Sunday and and Monday, the last couple of days. About this, so clearly people are concerned, the accusations that the that are made are very serious. You know, they're very serious accusations, but when you say, should it be discussed at council, should it be this, should it be that? The answer is, I have no idea, we've never put an official document in front of us talking about these accusations, talking about these allegations. We've had a number of documents granted from the source, from the NPCA showing, here's our year-end summary, here's our executive summary, here's our. You know, whatever, and so it's, as a, as a counselor, we've got the. CAO of the NPCA saying, you know, we didn't fire twenty-five percent of our our um staff. And he would know, you would think, like as the CAO of the NPCA, you think he'd know. Um, and then you've got an MPP, um Cindy Forrester from Niagara Center saying, yeah, they fired twenty-five percent of their staff. And you have, you know, citizens saying something else and I don't know the answer, I I I honestly do not know. Um, and it's because we don't have any oversight or we don't fund them or we don't play any role in their usage, right? So this is where I said, I'm happy to spend time on, you know, whatever you want to come and talk to me about. However, city council doesn't have any authority in this sense.
Well, nobody's claiming authority over it, even the region is saying, it's not us, and the province going, it's not us, and Winsley, yeah, let's.
Yeah, exactly, so that's, that's the, that is the issue. Now, one of the outcomes that. I think it's a good thing is, is last night, the the motion that was put on the floor um was referred for more, for more information, right? To look into that information. And so now we're gonna have city staff um who don't fund the NPCA, don't appoint board members. Don't, they they have no like bias here, to my knowledge, I admit, I have no idea, but. They're gonna look into some of these, these issues. The problem they're gonna uh run up against is where do they get their information, right? Um, but it'll be interesting to see what that report says when it comes back because. Though I'm happy to discuss any issue, because I think we've done some good work and I'll give you some concrete examples about. Stuff that's not within our mandate whatsoever, I personally have moved a motion, a couple motions that are not within our mandate. And I'll tell you why I did them, one of them was about um when the autism funding was cut. Um, at the provincial level, I don't know if you followed that story, the autism doesn't end at five campaign. Um, that that was a woman in in my ward, actually in my community contacted me and said, my son's autistic. Um, he's losing his funding, uh, he just, you know, turned six and I was like, you know, wow, that's, that's heartbreaking and and. What, how we worded the motion was we were requesting the province because we can't tell them what to do. Um, you know, to put the funding back in and in uh, in this model, I did, I did my research and. We also said circulate this to the other municipalities and get like a public pressure because that does work and look what happened, right? I'm not saying my motion changed anything, but I think the cumulative effect of motions from all across the province. From both opposition parties in the legislature, um, that pressure, the liberals changed their mind or the government, I should say, the government of the. Of the day changed their mind um because of that public pressure. Another example is I moved a motion about banning asbestos within Canada. Um, I went to a, this is a federal issue, so I went to one of these uh, the the day of mourning. Which is for workers who have uh died on the job or got injured on the job and they had a speaker there. Um, and she spoke about how her father and recent, uh, had died of mesothelioma from asbestos exposure while working in, I believe it was a GM plant. And that her uncle was just diagnosed, you know, same thing. And I had no idea, to be honest, until I heard the speaker that we were still importing asbestos, like as a, as a.
Exporting.
Exporting, yeah, sorry, um exporting asbestos.
And the idea is like, should the government of the day be charged with murder? For exporting something that's known to kill people?
So to get back is I, we moved a motion in support of this you, uh, this union who was fighting the federal government at the time. And I wasn't the only one, like I moved it, a bunch of other municipalities and again, public pressure. Um, so those are examples where we have no business, right? Like I'm not an expert in asbestos, I'm, I'm not, um. You know, an expert in autism, but uh, and our council, we don't have staff, we don't have doctors for autism or we don't have, you know, people dealing. We might actually have some engineers with asbestos, but I thought it was an important issue. I thought that public pressure could make a difference and it did, those are two concrete examples where it did. And uh, so I'm happy to deal with issues that aren't necessarily within our context. But we have to be realistic in in our expectations, right? Um, and we have to be realistic in in how we word the motion. The motion last night was, whereas city council has lost faith within the NPCA, I have no evidence. I know that there's a lot of public pressure, you know, against them, I I I understand that and there are some serious concerns, but. I can't say that I've lost faith in them, I have no concrete evidence to show that, right? So we'll see, we'll see what that report says.
Yeah, so and you know, I just, it's my take that there's so many. Very serious issues that we facing right now in our community, you know, jobs is obviously the buzzword and. I'm not sure that governments do anything to create jobs. Obviously, they create a climate where businesses can flourish, but government just doesn't make jobs at any level and that's why. You know, how many elections have I run in coming up on ten, I would say, with internal and and public and external elections. Uh, and my, you know, jobs are the buzzword and getting people elected even and I constantly like, you know what? That's so much bullshit, we don't create jobs as government and if we do, we're creating the wrong type of jobs. You don't even want the type of jobs that we create, you know, well, you'll never have a chance to get them, you might want them. And you might think it's good for the economy, but you'll, you'll never get them. So uh, and you know, the politics of distraction for me take away from these important issues like taxes. Like hydro costs, again, it's not in in your purview or your your mandate. And I'm not saying that the NPCA falls into that category because I think it's important, it seems to be kind of a rogue institution that. Maybe has lost its way, maybe it's just the perception, maybe it's a whole, just a bad PR uh campaign.
The, the point I was trying to make is, I don't know.
Right.
Right? Like I, I honestly don't know.
And I can't say I know much about it either, but it, you know, the optics are all bad, no, we didn't lobby, well, yeah, we actually found that you had a lobbyist. Oh, yeah, well, we, we did lobby, well, we, no, no, that, that was never on the table. To pave over the PSW, that, oh, actually, yeah, you were considering doing it, you're, you know, you kind of feel like you're in the developer's pocket. A little bit, or they are. You know, no, we uh.
Yeah, I get your point.
And then you, then it finds later that that they had, so I think it's, it's, it's a massive PR problem, obviously. But then when we go down the road of governance, I campaigned on no one Niagara. I don't want to see centralization of power, any more than it is already. In my opinion, the region, if anything, should be dissolved as an elected body. Yeah, we can have a service provider or multiple service providers to buy in bulk and get the discount that we need to provide services for Niagara. Citizens that are consuming uh water and, you know, we have to get rid of our waste and we have police and public health. And e- even if you put, you know, economic development under one roof from all the municipalities, which. Some municipalities are too small to even have an economic development.
They don't.
I didn't even know that.
Yeah.
So there's not twelve economic development.
No.
Departments, there's more like five or seven because though. And then the integrity commissioner and the code of conduct and then we talk dual duty and dual duty always for me and I, you know. I have nothing personal against Mayor Senzic, uh, I think he does with me a little bit for whatever reason, I don't know, I mean. I think it's interesting that people will not disclose that they have hate in their heart, but they forever, they're like, you know, when some, oh, you. You know, and you look at somebody, you're just like, no, you, you're not my cup of tea, I don't like you, you don't know them. And then very often later you'll go, okay, so I was wrong on that, or maybe you're validated on it. But we all have this thing in us where you don't like someone for no good apparent reason. Anyway, I met, I met with Walter a decade ago and said, hey, plug me in if you see a, an opportunity for me to help because I care and I want to help. And I, I had known him. And so, you know, I did, taking a shot at what he did at the Grape and Wine Festival. You know, changing the name to Niagara Wine Festival and then moving to the G, it's the St. Hazard's Chamber of Commerce and then changing that to the. Greater Niagara Chamber of Commerce without actually being greater anything or taking any other, if you took well into Niagara Falls and I'm beating a dead horse here, but. And then with the idea that one big group is better than twelve small groups, this dual duty came up or dual.
Yeah, whatever.
Double direct or whatever you call it, um, I thought, and I still think that that was the thin edge of the One Niagara movement. First, we get a little tweak here and I, I love how he tried to sneak it through in the first weeks of the mandate. Oh, come on, province, just let us do a little test pilot here.
Yeah.
I'm like, well, that's genius, I don't get it because I don't, you know, and then after I delved into the double direct or the dual duty. I've, I, I, I didn't like it at all.
Yeah.
But for me, it's a, it's a, it's a narrative that's buried back there that's moving this whole One Niagara thing forward and I felt like that was it. And 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 the One Niagara, I, I, I swear will never pass a triple majority in the region the way the political structure is set up.
It would have to be the province and I don't think any.
That's, there's no will right there, no political will right there and so. I just, I'm frustrated with the amount of time that we spend talking about things that just. Don't matter, like, wh- what the hell is double direct gonna change? How is that gonna make my life better? Well, it's not, it's actually gonna reduce the number of councillors, that's why I stood against it and it it kind of favors the centralization of power.
Yeah.
Kill the region, we don't need it as a governing body, but let's not make another level of government that's distant from the people that have the problem. Like, let's keep the solutions home-based, like closest to the people that are suffering the problem. Because as you get further away, you get the municipalities that are closest, then you get the region, they're further away, then you get the problems even further away. And then you get the feds even further away, the feds can't possibly know what's right for Wayne Fleet, for Niagara Lake, so. I, I guess that's a little bit of my frustration is, like, how much time have we spent on? And I want to get into the integrity commissioner and the code of conduct because I think it's, it's wholly important.
Answer dual rep because I'm on the other side of that.
Absolutely, and this is, you're, I'm doing too much talking, you're my guest, you should be doing the talking, I could do a monologue anytime.
But uh, as far as dual rep is concerned, you, you mentioned a little bit like, you know, what's uh Walter's agenda, you know, because it was Grape and Wine and Chamber of Commerce and. Before he ran for mayor, I didn't know Walter, I, I don't think I've, I don't think I ever met Walter before he ran for mayor. Um, I guess his, is his grand, I think one of his family members used to live across three from my family, but I didn't know Walter at all, so. Um, and I ran on dual rep, it was on my brochure, you can go look at it, you know, flip it up, it was under. Um, I actually had it under a heading about property taxes, holding the line on property taxes, but it was dual representation, it was right on there. And how this happened was when I was looking at running and I was looking at building a platform and looking at some issues. I went and talked with one of them, of course, uh, was actually Keithio from the Chamber of Commerce, so that makes sense. But um, I also asked my mom, who do you know? And uh, one of the people that she knew from her time was uh, Bruce Timms, and I talked with him and obviously this was one that was near and dear to him and. Um, I, I looked at all this stuff and I read the, the documents um that the governance committee under uh, I think. Cisco and and was it Birch chaired that committee or looked into that committee? Um, in the last term of council and I read those documents and and I liked the idea. Um, I'm, I know that you were saying you're against or you don't want centralization. Um, I find that there are efficiencies in centralization, I find that we can actually save money for centralization.
Never happens, so.
Um.
In any, in any municipality that's ever amalgamated, they only hired more staff and got bigger in the payroll.
Think that the services, and this is a comment that Tony actually made on your show the other day, and I think it's that the amalgamation of some services, we just talked about economic development. Right? Um, we can point to, at the city, we just amalgamated. Um, well, we're in the process of amalgamating our Parks and Rec department and our TES are now all being moved into the Lake Street Yard. Over, um, yeah, on the Lake Street Yard and so that for cost savings, right? Like we're saving costs because we're all moving into this one building, we're expanding that one, but. Um, the, so I, I believe, this is my belief, that um you can find efficiencies through centralization. Um, also, when you look at the stats and and this is where Tony and I will actually differ because he said he wants more politicians. Um, I think we have too many, I think when we compare ourselves, we have about a hundred and thirty throughout the region, I think. Just municipally and we have about four hundred and thirty thousand people in Niagara. You look at Hamilton, which I know is a one-tier system, a different city, but they have five hundred and fifty thousand, they have a hundred thousand more than us. And they have sixteen people, sixteen, now, is that too low? Maybe. But when you've got sixteen on one hand, you've got a hundred and thirty, there's gotta be a happy medium, there's gotta be a happy. Now, to, to Hamilton's point, they don't have two tiers, they're getting rid of the region, to your point. Um.
There's not many municipalities that have the two tiers, there's only a few in Ontario that are left, I think.
And so I think we could reduce the number of politicians and not hurt democracy in any way.
Let's start with killing the region, there's thirty-one of them right there, including the chair, big paychecks, not so much uh getting done. So, um, well, I, I appreciate your thoughts on that, but I, I will say that, yeah, I disagree with the uh, the idea that. Even if you find efficiencies, they'll be absorbed with new staff. Because there's always every time we amalgamate, there's never been a case of it anywhere and actually, there's a lot of de-amalgamation going on. You know, they, they were forced into it or they decided it was gonna be a better deal and then we're like, no, this ain't working, man. Let's, we go back to the, so I'd like to see that, but uh, just switching gears to the integrity commissioner because. And I think this is a wholly important conversation because we haven't, well, at the region, we haven't dealt with the code of conduct yet. Uh, I see something very lacking in the idea that a code of conduct doesn't respect uh freedom of speech or the charter. At any level, especially for a politician. I think a politician needs to be able to say whatever the hell he wants where, where relates to politics. If you don't like it, vote him out, if he commits a crime, then, okay. But other than that, I mean, just because you say something that's offensive or, you know, somebody used the other day of. For regional council, a female regional councillor was uh on the beach topless in town here. That'd be a, that, that could be a code violation, I'm like, really? But if she was on Cuba on a nude beach, like, because it's legal to be topless in Ontario.
Yeah.
But i- i- on a nude beach, you know, in an, on an international nude beach, now it's not offensive to me, I'm like, come on, I don't get this. So now, now it gets into the idea, okay, well, first of all, we don't have a standardized code across Ontario or Canada, I think that is important.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
The way um, these integrity commissioners are appointed with no real expertise. And and being um appointed or hired by the current um sitting government. Could is, you know, obviously could be abused.
Um, on that, just a quick, like, we'll go through each point, but um, I don't know how to solve this one, but I don't like that it's one like person. You know, um, you talk about jury of your peers, you talk about the, the relationship to the um, to the charter and that, you know, one of the things you have is. Right to be judged by your peers and stuff like that or um, one, one person like is gonna decide whether this was right or wrong. Everyone has their own biases as we talk, everyone's an individual, everyone, um, so like.
Down to bias.
But I'm just saying.
Unconscious, mandatory unconscious, bias training.
But uh, yeah, so that's, I don't know what the sol, the issue is because it's already a very expensive process, so I don't want to hire twelve of them. Right? That would be ludicrous, but it's just one of the issues I've had, I don't know what the solution is.
Yeah, um, well, I think the solution is uh a code that's consistent right across all levels of government. Uh, that allows people to say what they want with the idea that unless you're breaking the law. Well, and we even saw, you know, at the municipal, municipal elections act doesn't really give recall mechanism. You can't vote someone off council because they're a drug user, re, you know, Rob Ford.
Yeah.
We saw that and I think that maybe people now are, are thinking, you know what, maybe a recall mechanism would be good. You know, under certain, uh, under certain circumstances, uh, referenda, I think would be good and, you know. Petrowski, to his credit, he's done some good things and some not so good things. Uh, brought a motion forward at the region one time to initiate a referenda, he had the questions all laid out and he got voted right off the floor. What the hell's wrong with having a non-binding plebiscite where people can go and vote? And get, and and politicians can take the pulse of the community and go, oh, really? Everyone wants a One Niagara? Well, maybe we should be talking about that, the problem is, no one wants a fricking One Niagara except the big business guys. And with the idea that they're gonna save money or blah, 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 or there's too many politicians. I personally think the more politicians, the better access I have to them, so if I don't call, you know, if I, you know, if Jenny Stevens is busy. You know, what's his name? So if I don't call, you know, if I, you know, if Jenny Stevens is busy, you know, what's his name? I'll pick up the phone maybe. Hey with you. Um, who who I don't know either, but kind of is a hero for me from the standpoint that. He he switched his vote on that double direct thing and he killed it and I was on twelve agendas to go speak at it all across. The region to make sure it didn't happen and and so I'm glad he did that because I don't know him, but. So the code is a problem. The code's gonna come back before regional council. But when Petrowski said, well, I'm gonna challenge the constitutionality of the code, I'm like, yeah, let's do this because. You've got all these codes all over the place that say different things and there's an idea that, no, you're twenty-four seven councillor. And it doesn't matter where you go topless or whose basement you're watching football in when you make an inappropriate remark. Or you do something inappropriate, that that can be all dragged up before the integrity commissioner and waste all this money. With the idea that there's really no teeth in a punishment. I mean, they screwed up the punishment so bad on Petrowski, it was unreal like. He seemed to comply with the sensitivity and apology and all this kind of stuff, but they really have no mandate to make him do anything, including. Coming to his seat, maybe they can kick him off commu- uh, committees, but I kind of hold the line that, no, if you don't like it, vote me out. And unless I've done something, well, even then, even if you've done something criminal, I don't know that there's a mechanism to get someone off council. But this whole idea that we we ha- we have to clean up the code of conduct and we need a process that respects the charter as far as the integrity commissioner goes. And this integrity commissioner, we talked briefly just before we went on air here about you being the subject of integrity complaints and so. You you know, tell me a little bit about that experience and the frustration of one not facing you, not being able to face your accuser. You actually don't even have a copy of the complaint. You don't get to speak to the guy that renders the decision until after his decisions rendered. So jurisprudence goes right out the freaking window and this is again, like freedom of speech, one of the most, one of our core. The one of our fundamentally most important core principles and we're like, nah, that's fine. So and now being used as a political tool, right? So someone gets pissed off with Mike Britton or, okay, I'll file a complaint. I mean, we even have bodies that aren't eligible to file complaints under the system, i.e. Town Appellum. They're not a person.
Well, that's actually.
Out of order right off the bat.
I had never considered that because one of the complaints um, that was filed against me was uh, from Jeff Birch, who's. Uh, the director of the or the executive director of the Folk Arts Multicultural Centre. Um, and I remember about halfway through when it it kind of. When when it kind of, most people were on the side of this is a waste of money. This is ridiculous. Um, the narrative was tried to be switched. Well, no, it wasn't Jeff Birch. It was the the Folk Arts.
Even worse.
Yeah, so I I I actually don't know how that ever got cleared up. He but that was what they kind of said was it was actually the Folk Arts Board that filed this complaint. Um, just to give some background, I should have, you know, led with this is um, the Folk Arts is uh, gets a grant from the city for their festival each year under the. Uh, the the Grants and Festivals program and um, they come to council and they tell us what they're gonna use the money for, right? It's it's kind of the, hey. Tell us what you're doing with with the taxpayers' dollars, right? And I had heard some issues. I went to, I love the Folk Arts Festival. It's one of, I go to, I think I went to every open house the last two years. And there's about thirty, some of them, there are maybe twenty. Um. And there are different cultural societies, the Polish community, Armenian community, the Ukrainian community, all have their their open houses in there and they're just wonderful, but. There were some issues, like I don't need to get into the weeds, but I heard from some of the cultural communities. Um, that there were some issues with the festival. They they were worried about some concerns and. As a representative, I asked these questions, right? Just like I did last night with the NPCA. I I don't know, he he said he didn't watch, but I went, here's an email that I received with these concerns and I asked them, right? They're not gonna file a and at least I hope not. They're gonna file an integrity commissioner complaint because they were rough. They were harsh questions. Like I asked them, you know. But this was the NPCA, like, somebody's saying you're not filling your mandate because of this, this and this, like, I I was pretty. Bolton with them and and that's kind of what I was doing. I said, the cultural community has brought these concerns. Can you, you know, answer and? And the allegation was that um, my I bullied them by asking these questions. And so that was the integrity commissioner complaint was bullying. Um, now, the, there was a report, it went through the uh, the. The commissioner, integrity commissioner just said it was completely politically driven. Uh, I was really surprised because this this is a lawyer. Uh, his name was uh, I think it was John Masgren who did it. Yeah, it was John Masgren. Um, and he's a, he's a lawyer and so usually lawyers are careful with their language, but he used qualifiers like it was totally. You know, totally unwarranted and completely, you know, like it was, like it was really like strong language. The the report's available online. We received it at council. It's. It's open to the public. Um, now, he wrote that report without ever contacting me. Um, but the the reason um, given was that it never actually got to the investigative stage. It was that. Um, it was that he was able to just watch the video and see that there wasn't enough evidence to to even go forward with it.
Cool, man.
So.
I mean, in this case, it worked out all right, but I mean, it could have very easily turned out the other way and then what? You're you're sitting there going, what? No one talked to me? And we got this decision that says I'm guilty of this, this and this and this and I don't even get to.
And if I stand up in council, once the like, you know, like Andy, right? If I stand up in council, once it's out there, well, I'm gonna fight the expert, right? Like, you know, that's.
The four hundred dollar an hour guy?
That looks pretty bad, right? So, um, yeah, it was a bit of a weird process to go through. The other uh, integrity commissioner complaint. Um, the the applicant or the complainant withdrew, I think, once they found that they didn't have enough evidence. Um, but they withdrew it, so that never went all the way through the steps, but. Um, yeah, so I'm I'm intimate with the process and the lack thereof, to be honest. Um, I think that as we discussed, there is a need for for oversight. I think that there there is a need. I'm I'm a believer of that. But the standardization of a code would definitely be an important step to making it more effective, you know?
What's your take on uh, capacity? I mean, this has been talked about a lot, official capacity.
Yeah.
The code, I think, well, the code of conduct came before Masgren brought the code of conduct to the region.
Yeah.
And then uh, Volpatti and Quirk gutted it as far as they made fifty-four changes, their amendments to it. That might, it sounds like it might actually hold, but it's gonna come back. It might be approved by the committee though. And then come back to be ratified by council and and maybe there'll be some debate over that, but I'm not sure what happens there, but. This idea and then Sandy Ananziata, obviously, uh, you know, I don't know Sandy that well. I I I like Sandy kind of a lot. Uh, I went to high school with him, so I knew him from Notre Dame a little bit. Um, he's a madman and I'm kind of that we got that guy too. I don't agree with everything he does. He's obviously conservative and, you know, I'm kind of a lefty. Uh, but big gonads, man, taking the chair at NPCA and I think uh, Tim's was smart to get the fuck out of the way because. Well, he probably wants to be reelected again and I'm thinking that probably being the chair of the NPCA for Bruce. Wasn't the most appropriate place for him to be if he wanted to be reelected. So I think he got out of the way smartly because of that.
It was a hornet's nest for for Sandy to get into for sure, like.
Yeah, but that takes big, big.
Just last night, um, like with the debate that we had last night, like I almost wanted to stay quiet, right? Stay out of it. Don't say anything. Because it's such a hornet's nest, but I I realized, like, I had these questions from residents and I needed to stand up and ask them, right? Like, this is, because I didn't know the answers, so.
And I don't, I I'm certainly not prepared and it's it's, I I love having this conversation, so thanks. Mike Britton's my guest, uh, councillor for uh, City of St. Catherine's. We actually think in conversations. I mean, you could sit there and think all day in your head, nothing ever changes. It's not until we try to articulate our argument and this is what I do as a. As an openness, low in conscientiousness, I'm always, I'm about ideas and I want to discuss the issues of the day mostly. But it's not until I put the words off my lips that someone will go, um, no, that's wrong. And we're talking about this Charlie thing with some Green Party friends, old Green Party friends, because I'm not really connected to the party that that much. I was in Toronto this weekend. Had dinner with a couple of girlfriends of mine that were connected to the party that go way back to oh six. And so I was articulating this frustration about Charlie, the ten-year-old, you know, and I probably got my information wrong, but I phrased it as like. At ten years old, you shouldn't be able to say, okay, take this sexual organ off me and put a new one, a different one on, like it it sounds like. But it's not until I present my case orally and verbally and out to the universe that my friends and enemies and. By the way, I learn more from my political and 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 functional enemies than I do anyone else. Because the the yes people are like, oh, yeah, yeah, you know, when you hang around with people, I'll think the same. You don't learn a damn thing. So it's not till the words come off our lips that someone go, oh dude, that's so wrong and this is why. And then you soften your position on it. It's like.
Yeah.
That idea is dead now, rather than me dying, when, you know, I I put the words out there, the idea. Either lives on and you're validated that you feel right incorrectly or or not. Uh, or and then if 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 you're off base, you you get shut down right away. So this is again, goes back to. You know, and we started talking about Sandy in the in the official capacity. This um, idea that he's driving to CFRB every week in Toronto and claiming, I don't know, a hundred and fifty bucks in mileage or something like that, right? And everyone's drinking the Kool-Aid on this thing. And I'm not a Sandy Ananziata honk. I'm, you know, he's not my best friend. Never had a beer with the guy. It's just like you. I mean, I talk to people in politics. I can disagree respectfully and then go for a beer, but I mean, Sandy's not a friend of mine. So I reached out to him and I said, like, what's this deal all about? Well, it's four thousand dollars. Well, how many times you going up there every week? Well, so what's that, like forty, forty-five weeks if you take out the holidays? Yeah, something like that. And I go, and they announce you as councillor. Oh, yeah. Every break, every going out, every extra, they've done, and I'm sitting with Sandy Ananziata, elected councillor in Agar Region. I I don't get the problem. Well, he's not in official capacity and and again, I'm beating around the bush and going long-winded here. It's my style. Um, is that a legitimate expense? Well, damn straight it is to me. I'm the only guy that I know. Well, that has said publicly, it's a good deal, man, four grand. Four grand, have you seen ten tens rates? Like.
Yeah.
They're probably a hundred bucks a thirty-second commercial or seventy at least. I mean, here in town, I think the, I paid fifty. Uh, I mean, maybe you can get a good deal if you if you buy more, but ten ten, their rates are astronomical, I would think. So. And Sandy's giving us some exposure. Maybe they're not talking about local issues, but nobody even talks local issues on our local talk station. Like, duh, they talk to roundtables. And oh, don't get me started on the roundtable, but okay, so I came out and I said, you know what? I think it's a good deal because at four grand, if he had forty appearances. That's gotta be a thousand mentions. A thousand mentions in going into the show, into the commercial, out of the commercial. At the beginning of the show, the promo for the show, the Facebook page of the show, you know, uh, Agar's tweets and stuff like that. It's always Sandy, 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 Sandy. And Agar Region, Agar Region. So I think it's a good deal, but it it really brought to light this this idea of official capacity. So I'm interested on your take of when you're a councillor, when you're not a councillor, because let's face it. Some of our um, integrity meters are off. Some of us don't really get uh, when we're acting, our conscience is maybe a little bit. Um, conscious, it was our conscience, conscience. Sometimes isn't going, uh, that's inappropriate. Some people don't have that as much as others do. I kind of feel like if you live by your conscience, you're gonna be okay.
Yeah.
But you know, there's very few psychopaths out there that, you know, don't have a conscience. But you can't count on everyone for that. So then it comes back to the code, the code of conduct. And then the code brings in the integrity commissioner and how much time and money this is eating up. Now, everyone's pissed off about this forty-four thousand dollars, you know, that Andy brought forward for a a cost of. I think he was suing the region to stand up for his democratic right. Uh, that didn't go so so well, but the tweets that brought his integrity commissioner complaints were out there for a year.
Yeah.
At least for months and months and months. They were there sitting there. Anyone could have looked at it and got offended and it wasn't until this political. Movement that said, okay, let's go get them. We'll pull up this and we'll pull up that and we'll pull up this and some in the media, some in council, some in different districts. All of a sudden, you know how much that that one integrity complaint against Andy cost? The taxpayers? Twenty-five grand. Because Maskarren is talking to people, hi, I wanna call and talk about Andy offended me. Oh, go on. He talks for two hours, that's eight hundred, nine hundred bucks.
Yeah.
Ding 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 ding, like, I don't get it. So, yeah, I appreciate your thoughts on this idea of, you know, you said watching football in the basement of my friend's house. Uh, you know, Andy talks about being on a fishing boat up north, uh, you know. An activist here in town here was talking about, you know, a certain councillor going topless on a beach, how that was inappropriate. Really? In Ontario?
Yeah, so I think there there's two parts to this and one is is the the twenty-four or, you know, your official capacity and the other part is what the code dictates. Um, I tend to fall on the side of you, you are kind of on the clock more often than not. I, to be honest, twenty-four seven. Um, I I fall on that side of that spectrum and I think it's because you're you're expected to. Um, you're held to a higher regard as a politician. Uh, my classics background reminds me of, there's a quote Caesar said. You know, Caesar's wife has to be above reproach, right? Even his family has to be, you know, the perfect. It has optics, right? So uh, there's a story back and he divorced one of his wives because there was an implication that. Um, she was sleeping around. She wasn't. He knew she wasn't. But he divorced her because of the implication. Caesar's wife has to be above reproach. Um, so obviously that's two thousand years ago, not, you know, but that idea that. Politicians are held to a higher regard. Um, I believe in that. I I do. That said, um, then there there is what you were talking about, which is freedom of speech, which is they can be held to a higher regard, but they can also speak their mind. Right? They shouldn't be attacked for going to church. I think Selena Volpatti made that point um. During the code discussions uh, at the region. She said, like, I'm Catholic. I go, you know, to to church and my church believes in X, Y and Z. I like, I shouldn't have to defend that, right, in a political court of law. Uh, because this is, this is my beliefs. And I was like, yeah, that's a, that's a fair point. So I feel like it's the issue with the code, so. Yes, I would say you're on more often than not, but I don't think the code should be attacking personality traits, like in that sense, like the or the. Belief structure. Um. As as we talked about earlier with my integrity complaints, I believe that there needs to be an oversight body, but it needs to be far better regulated and actually. Um, I'm gonna get into a different issue here a little bit, but when the first things about the tweets and Andy Petrowski came up. I actually asked it my city council for a review of our code of conduct. Um, so that's something that. Should be coming back anytime now because that was over two years ago. We have an issue with backlogs and reports and stuff like that, so. Um, yeah, that was, I asked for that almost immediately after. I didn't really get any press or I think we didn't strike a committee. But um, we're looking at reviewing ours and and making sure that it does follow guidelines. I don't think I mentioned uh, you know, follow the charter or anything like that.
Well, I think you need this, I think the code of conduct needs to be measured to the charter and it needs to be nationwide. And I think that, you know, municipal governments all over the place are having a frustration with, what do you do with a Rob Ford when he goes rogue?
Yeah.
Um, you know, short of being incarcerated, there's no real function to get, so do we need a recall mechanism? But I just want to touch on this important issue too, because I think it's it's um, outrageous that. If you're a Christian and your belief is uh, traditional marriage. That doesn't automatically make you a hate-filled homophobe.
Yeah.
If you're pro-life, doesn't mean automatically you hate women. Like, this is what the left is is spewing these days and this is why I'm so turned off with it, you know? We have a pro-life demonstration at the corner of Martindale and Fourth Ave. They got their really graphic signs and I'm not down with that, but there's certain freedom of speech in that too. I know there's an argument of what what happens when I drive my four-year-old or my ten-year-old by that goes, mommy, why is there a dead baby on that placard? Well, placard, you wouldn't be using that term, but.
Um, it's very intelligent for you.
So, you know, measuring the freedom of speech, the aspect of freedom of speech was so important, especially for the ideal uh, ideologues. For the racist, homophobic, intolerant assholes out there. Um, it's important, especially important for them so that they can show the world what an idiot they are. But the idea that you that if you're pro-life, you hate women is just, is so far whacked out. Like, this is where the conversation stops. Oh, you hate women. So they're protesting on Martindale Road. Some jackass comes up shirtless with something written on his shirt, obviously looking for confrontation. He stomps all over their signs. This actually happened. I don't know if you heard this. It got reported and man, do we have a low threshold for what is news these days, especially locally? Ew. And I'm not saying this is news, don't get me wrong. Bad interviews. The idea, so this guy comes up and he. The idea, so this guy comes up and he stomps all over their signs. And tries to ruin their signs and and he's probably having words with them too. In my mind, it's like. If you spit on someone, that's assault. If you throw blood on someone, that's assault. If you take their sign out of their hand and. Put it on the ground, even though you maybe haven't even touched them. Yeah, I think that could be threatening and could be seen as assault and I figure that's more assault destroying a protester's sign at a picket.
Imagine doing that at the picketers right now at Niagara College. You think that, you get away with that?
Oh, no. So again, I think that's more assault. So then, you know, on social media, one of my favorite left-wing wackos who's like diversity everywhere, equality everywhere. We quotas like, come on, man. We can't legislate diversity and equality. We're not freaking equal for the first part. And let's talk about why, both with races and sexes. So he says more of this. I'm like, more of what? Assault? I'm like, dude, salt, assault over free speech, got it. And so. I hate women because I, because I'm pro-life. I'm not pro-life. But because I came out in that argument in favor of the guy that was demonstrated or, no, the people that were demonstrating. Not the guy that was assaulting them. Now I hate women. So I I find it uh sickening actually how you're limiting beliefs. Being whatever they are, uh, being based in Christianity or whatever. And it's funny because. If I say I'm in favor of traditional marriage, many would say I'm a homophobe and I'm not. I mean, I love who you want. I think that's fine. Dolphins are gay in the wild. I think humans are gay naturally. You don't learn to be gay, can't turn it off. But this idea that as soon as you come out in favor of something that that makes you a certain way is. Is is it makes me sick and it also stifles the conversation. And more so now, I think the left is engaging in this identity politics of you're a racist homophobe because you believe in this. And like, like, you know, you know, some, you know, I said the other day, the uh. The fundal, the fundamental Western values that we've assumed are valid. What? Okay, so, well, yeah, like, we have some fundamental Western values that have worked for a long time. And how can you prove it? Well, people wanna come to these countries, North America. They wanna live here for what reason? Because our assumptions about society and civilization have worked or are still working. Hundreds and hundreds of years and sometimes thousands of years.
And if you wanna see where those are based, I know in the States, there there's the one nation under God, of course, but in our charter, we have the same thing. Right? Our national anthem, God save this land, you know, like it's very.
But now we're seeing that taken prayer taken out of us, soon the national anthem will be changed because it only, you know, deals with one God. I went to a hotel in Markham this this week. Um, wow, what an experience that was. You know, I like going to Toronto, but I'm I've never immersed in that much culture. And to be the minority.
It's an interesting.
It's weird, man, especially when it's like. If I go to Harlem, I guess, you know, you're a certain, you expect everyone to be black around you, but in Canada. Like when I walk into McDonald's and I'm the only white guy there and everyone's Asian or Chinese, I'm like, wow, this is weird. It's a learning experience. Uh, like it's different for me.
I spent some time in Scarborough doing some work and uh in Brampton and. And yeah, like there's many situations there and it's 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 in, I've learned a lot. Cause I try and engage and I try and learn. It's it's the reason I like the Folk Arts Festival is when you go into one of those open houses and. Everyone's, you know, you're at the Armenian Center or everyone, you go to the Hindu Samaj or, you know, you go to the mosque. Um, I've been to the mosque a number of times, you know, and um, it's it's interesting. It's fascinating learning.
And that's, I think that.
But the feeling you get, I think that's what you're saying. The feeling you get, like you feel something when you're in a room and you're, oh, wow, I'm the only, you know, white guy or whatever. You get that feeling. Um, I'm not saying, like, I I don't know, I'm just.
Well, as privileged white, uh, good-looking, single men. We don't get the chance to to feel that very often. And there's nothing, I'm not trying to put myself in in. In that position because there's really no. There's no hate or intolerance that's coming off you in. In Markham at a McDonald's in the morning, just because you're the only white guy in there, but in the room. Courtyard Marriott, there was a holy Bible and a Book of Mormon in the drawer. I'm like, what? I've never seen another religious book and this is another failing. I can't remember the speaker, but it's just struck such a chord with me. You know, universities are failing us and I think they're about to change for the better rapidly soon. Um, knowledge is everywhere. We can watch university lectures online for nothing. Um, and I think a lot of that is where we'll be educated. And you have a standardized test. You wanna watch all these things and go write the test? You should be able to get a degree. But what what uh are learning, especially our higher learning institutions, but even in an elementary school. Why don't we teach more more world religions? Because if I don't understand what the Muslim creed is or what they believe in, then I can't have any respect for it. And if I just grew up Christian my whole life, even though, you know, I grew up Catholic, you know, consider like, is that Christian? This is the the failing of our learning institutions is teach world, teach them all. You know, you're not gonna have to in-depth into all of them, but that way, when we roll up on a Chinese guy. Who claims to be Hindu or whatever, I think it's Hindu, one of the predominant religions over there. At least you got a background into what makes him tick and what his uh core values are because. Just being in our little silos is just making us more racist and and intolerant, which, you know, I. Said many times before, I think is humans' natural proclivity, one of my favorite new words. So and and it also fosters this discussion. So it just seems like most of the time now, uh, the left and the right is just like, oh, no. You're hate-filled. You're you're this, you're that. And then the discussion stops. So, you know, we really need to keep the discussion going. The left does things really well that the right doesn't do well. And the right do a lot of things well that the left doesn't do well. And we've talked about this on other shows, so I won't beat it up, but these are, these are. Personality types that have been documented over many decades at least. As we try and understand our own minds, our own consciousness, like what the hell? What does a consciousness serve us? There's not many other animals that have consciousness, but we're finding it in chimps now. If you put lipstick on a chimp and show him his picture in a mirror, he'll wipe it off. So he has to be conscious to some level, maybe not that he's gonna die in twenty years like we are, like we, you know? But there's, and I just find. Here, we don't even know where we came from for sure. There's no, there's a theory of evolution. That's why they call it a theory, cause there's so many damn holes in it. And then we have uh, you know, books like the Bible that are sometimes metaphorical stories, I think that. You know, that are told in ways that we can understand.
Jesus literally talks in parables, like they're literally, here's this story I'm gonna make up for you to prove a point. Right? He's not, Jesus isn't a literalist.
But then we will defend to the death our God that we don't even know exists. Or we don't know is the right God, but we will fight to the death to defend our God. And we don't even know where we came from for sure. We could be an alien ant farm, you know? And I think that's an interesting concept, but the the discussion needs to be continued. And I I'm not in favor of anything that shuts it down by saying you're a racist homophobe because you said this. Uh, I made the joke, you know, if I tweet out a naked picture of me sitting on a stool with my legs open, no one's gonna call that pornographic. So the media does have to have a responsibility of, okay, and I fell for it too. Um, but you don't obvi, I mean, we're all in this together and we're getting nowhere by fighting each other. And this is what Trump has brought to the forefront. And I think uh this transgender discussion has really brought. Um, the feminists and and some of the people that are struggling with sexual identity out. And I don't understand it. I'm learning right here. And so talking to you, I could.
Yeah, me too.
Completely ignorant of some of these facts. I only have some beliefs that are hardwired into me and have been, you know, conditioned into me by society. That I'm wrestling with because I'm like, ooh, ten-year-old Charlie, I don't know.
So two things that we were just, we touched on a few times and I wanted to expand on, I don't know how we're doing for time, but um. The uh, you were just talking about the media and locally and how, you know, you've had some issues with it, of course, on the radio and all different levels. I have to say, so far in my, I've only been in this gig now almost three years, like just just under three years. Um, I've been pretty lucky, I think, at council with um. Are both our reporters from both our major, you know, Karina Walters from the Standard and and Melinda Chevers. And before her, Scott Ross from Niagara this week. They are, I don't know what you think of their writing, but like it's very, here's what happened. If you look at their NPCA article just this morning from last night, that was a complicated two and a half hour issue and it was like, here's what happened. I would say that both sides of the coin should be happy with that article, like at least I read it and I went, you know, that's.
As a factual account of what went down.
And and so I would say that with at least my experience, uh, even at six-ten, you know, they've invited me on for certain issues. Hey, you moved this motion about Facer Street, um, why don't you come on? So like, I feel like I've been given a pretty fair shot. Um, but then there, as we talked about Andy and and like the kind of constant, uh, you know, pushing on them. So um, I I feel like I've been pretty uh lucky with with media locally. So that was just the one point. I sound like I'm pounding right now trying to get press, but if you're watching, you know, write a nice, write a nice article.
I'm not getting on this ten anytime soon.
But uh, no, I just, I I think I can look back. Something I just mentioned to you, I I'm in the process of redoing my website. Um, and one of the things I'm doing on is just collect compiling past news articles. Um, obviously a little bit of self-promotion, obviously for myself, but I'm like here are the news articles and just going through them was a nice little. Um, look back at, you know, what's been accomplished, what's been done at council and. And uh, I would say those articles, I even put in some of them about uh where we had some budget squabbles that were quite vocal. You know, between myself and the budget chair and and the mayor.
You know, I'd love to be in the room for that.
But so I'm just saying like.
Budget committees at the committee meetings of budget at the city? Are they public, those meetings?
Yeah, they're public. Um, and they're live streamed now.
Oh, okay, cool.
Um, which is great. That's that's a new thing this year, I think. Um, but anyway, so.
Oh, you mean you and Cisco and the mayor don't see eye to eye on every subject all the time? You have your own.
Have you not seen these articles? I mean, he shut off my mic the one time. He got mad that I used a PowerPoint presentation, so. Yeah, those are legitimate articles that I put on my website, cause I wanted to give like, you know, here's, here's the account. But even those articles where clearly there's one side and there's another, I was quite happy with, right? Like there's an issue where my microphone got shut off or, you know, I was dressed down for using a PowerPoint or, you know. Um, some pretty serious, like, you know, controversial back and forth issues and I was happy with the reporting. I'll say that. Like it was very much this happened, make your own kinda decision.
I and I guess you have to draw the line somewhere, but you know, uh, as it relates to, you know, you going on the radio. I absolutely uh appreciate you being given the opportunity to go on and speak about something. But that's pro, it's basic propaganda, right? So if they're talking to you about emotion that you're bringing forward, you're gonna speak to all the reasons why it comes. And then often what we don't get is the other side of the story. And you know what? For all I care, I don't really care what Mike Britton thinks about his own measure, his own motion. I do care what the callers think, because sometimes the callers can call in and go, you know what? I've known Mike since blah, blah, blah. And you know what? Here's a relative part of the, a relevant part of the conversation you missed here. And it could be all BS, but at least, you know, so I I'm more like more callers, less hosts, makes for a better show. But uh.
Well, so just the budget issue was a great example where the radio, I think, really helped me here was. Um, there was this issue about, okay, so there's the the city's tax rate and then there's the blended tax rate. I don't wanna go too far into the weeds here, but you know, there's, the city increases our our expenses and our budget by so much and there's that percentage. And then you have to factor in the school board and the region and that gets your final property tax, which is called the blended rate. Well, for years and years, and you can look back at the standard and Niagara this week and bullet news when it existed and everyone, they they. I'm just saying, you can look back and they always presented the um, the the city tax rate. Here's the city tax rate. Well, two years ago, we had a bad budget year and there were legitimate reasons for it, so I wasn't even actually arguing that point. But I was arguing transparency, which was, we were now advertising the blended tax rate. It was the first thing you see when you open the budget book. Because the the, that was the year the region came in at zero percent and it made it look like uh we did a very good job. So our rate was five percent. It was a five percent tax increase with the inflation being two. And so anyway, I said that's wrong. I said, we should not be showing the blended tax rate when for years and years we've been showing the city tax rate. That was my argument. And nobody would listen to me. I, and maybe this is a little bit about the media, but I said it in the budget chambers. I actually, I actually called Grant LaFlesh, funny enough. Um, I thought he was, I called Grant LaFlesh because I thought he would be the one to. I thought he would be the one to wanna like sink his teeth into the story because I I said it in budget chambers, nobody picked it up. I said it, you know, uh, again, nobody picked it up. And so I called Grant and I thought he'd sink his teeth into this and. And his response was simply, well, I don't cover St. Catherine's City Council, um, so maybe talk to Karina, right? That was his response. And it was funny, cause about a week later, after I did get pressed, he wrote an article on me, which was funny, but just to say.
Grant LaFlesh, did you say? Maybe he's just like an opinion, maybe he's a columnist, not a reporter.
I I thought maybe, cause I thought he could expand into a Niagara, cause the year that the region came in at zero. Other municipalities started doing the blended rate too. Um, Pelham did it, I think forty or yeah, like other cities started doing that same propaganda in this sense. So anyway, after all this, and I wasn't getting any press, like or I wasn't getting any knowledge on this, I wanted people to know. It's five percent, cause how do you call your councillor and say, I'm not okay with five percent if you don't hear the five percent number? So then I called up uh six-ten and they went, yeah, come on, talk to us, right? And after that, there was articles in Standard, there was the article.
Cause they don't have to pay you to come on. It's free content. They're thinking Bell won't pay for a new host out here, so get Mike Britton to come on.
But I'm just saying, I have to thank, you know, six-ten, cause after that to time that I was on the radio. They weren't all great articles, like in the sense that they were saying, you know, Mike Britton blindsides the budget chair and uh. You know, he goes up and is this the breaking of the Cisco Five and Doug Herod wrote an article calling me the Yoko Ono of the Cisco Five.
See comedian?
Anyway, yeah, he is actually, I think, but. Anyway, so it wasn't all good press, but the five percent number was out there. And after I went on that radio. Um, we knew about the five percent. Now it ended up still being five percent, but my mission was accomplished, which was transparency in that number.
And then it finally got reported after six-ten picks it up because six-ten can't say something without, and vice versa. I mean, six-ten takes a lot of their news from the print in this town too, because the print's got a little bit more resources as far as sending the guy out. To do some investigation. I mean, when we found out the bridge was being, I was at the station when the bridge, when they, when they stopped working the bridge. And I called Trip and I'm like, hey, I didn't know him at the time. I still don't know him. What's up with the bridge? Oh, we're shutting it down for Easter. I'm like, it's Tuesday. Easter's not for four or five days. What do you mean? And then it came out that there were some some stability issues. So I don't have time for, you know, the propaganda so much, but.
Yeah, anyway, that was just my little media rant. Uh, the other issue, I don't know if you had one queued up, but uh, we were talking a little bit about. Um, women and and you talked about that one uh culture where the women were all working together, the fifteen and they.
Well, this is in every culture.
But something about women in politics, I've been, I've been looking into this a little bit recently. Our our Association of Municipalities of Ontario, it's the, this body that kind of represents all of us. Uh, put out some literature on how we can help improve the number of women in politics. And I was looking at the statistics from our last election in Niagara, St. Catherine's in particular. And I I found a really interesting statistic, which for me um is exciting. And it's that the percentage of women that won versus ran and the percentage of men that won versus ran is the same, thirty-three percent. The problem is that nine women ran, this is regional city, and three won. And forty, you know, whatever fifty it was, men ran and, you know, the the rest of them uh won. So the percentage though was the same, which is exciting for me because I think that if we can get more women to run. It's not that there's the, there's that anti-woman, like we don't wanna vote for women. Um, you know, sexism exists, sexism is still a problem, but the the fact is if we get more women to run, I think more women will be elected. And that's a really.
And I think as society as a whole will be better. What I'm afraid of is quotas and I will say that I think that. Uh, and for places like the the United States. Um, and maybe it's too simple of an analogy, but before Clinton lost, which I lightly predicted. The day before, I said to the girl I was getting water from, I'm like, well, wait till you wake up tomorrow and Donald Trump is president. I was half joking, half not. Women are smarter than men. Boys are stupid. They they're running and women just don't have any fucking idea. What it it means to think about sex thousands of times a day. They don't have that problem. We have this thing called testosterone that makes us stupid and aggressive and and. More sexually driven, I think.
I don't know where you're going with that one, but. My point was women in politics, that's what I was.
Yeah, and I think it makes for a softer, more tolerant society. Well, so, but the point I was making is. But the point I was making is, I think women, again, there's, they have more things that are important to them. Family is important. If you're a thirty-year-old woman and you don't have a child right now, guess what your next most likely.
Yeah.
Step in your life is gonna be, that you make consciously. There's very few women like Oprah Winfrey with no babies, I'm gonna have a career. Because this is the most important thing a woman can do is have a baby. Now, some women don't want to have babies, but most of them. Crave, we all want family. What are you gonna do when you're fifty years old if you don't have any kids? You have no one around you. So I think women are emotionally more uh attentive to the fact that what's really important. I struggle with running for the region. I see the region as a like a place where I could possibly be elected. For the first time, because I've always run green and I've never really run to win.
Right.
You know, even running for mayor was was just to make sure that I exposed Walter for who he was. Uh I didn't want him to be elected and me sitting on the sidelines going, oh man, if I could have stopped that, you know, and my and. My life didn't end when Walter was elected and you know, I I have no problem with Walter personally, if he wants to bury the hatchet, but for whatever reason, that's. You know, he doesn't see me as an ally or anybody that really cares about his community, otherwise he would plug me in somehow. I struggle with running with the region because my mother from the other side, you know, she died seven years ago. And I I've been on boards, many boards before. And her take on it would be, why do you want to sit with these coconuts? With these people that don't really have anything better to do, you know, the people that are. They're really killing it out there, that are really have good businesses, they don't have time to run for the region. So what do you get as a as a candidate? Uh what do you get as a candidate for a potential election? Now, you're a young guy and. You know, you're putting your heart and soul into this, but most people have businesses and jobs and they can't afford. And I think on some level. Women look at this and go, I'm not fucking going to sit up with those turkeys, because they're stupid.
Yeah.
They don't get it and I'm way too intelligent to be with them, so I think there's a whole bunch of natural reasons why and don't get, there's no gender pay cap. Like stop it. Women are making more money and the younger women are making more money than the younger men right now in lots of areas.
Well, so just there's a note of of the women personality on council, um on city council, we have two. And Sandy Bellows uh was elected, you know, same time I was, and she's actually stood up a few times. Uh when maybe it'll be a contentious issue and she'll say.
I've never seen her stand up or say anything, I don't think.
You, I'm just trying to, I want to get this right, because she has this uh, she she'll one time just said, you know, if you boys can't play nice in the sandbox.
Sexist!
Right? But um she said that before, right, when we're really in a contentious issue and uh it's almost she brings us back to reality. Right? We're we're blowing something out of proportion, you know, or whatever the case may be. She wasn't able to make it last night at the the NPCA, but um issue, but. I feel like she's been that that um kind of calming.
Um nurturing mother figure.
Yeah, like I I call, I call her my political mom, because she actually went to high school with my actual mom. And uh yeah, so it's a small world, it seems everybody went to Grantham High School in the city with with my mother. Um but anyway, so they're they're I think the same age or within one year, so when we go to events and whatever, she's my political mom. I'm the same age as her son. Yeah, it's kind of fun. We have a good relationship and uh uh she she definitely does bring that reason.
Okay, it's eleven thirty-eight, I gotta get you out of here for a noon-er, but uh just talk to me about what's coming up. You got Buchanan House, uh dog park, picnic tables, first vote. You wanna, you wanna hit any of that stuff, uh how we get ahold of you?
Well.
I mean, you got as much time as you want, you want to blow your lunch, let's keep going.
I'll spend a few minutes.
I don't mean blow your lunch, I mean blow your lunch date. I don't mean blow your lunch date. I mean.
Anyway, um.
Mention I'm I'm a comedian.
A little bit, a little bit.
I'm gonna put that on my Twitter feed so that I can say anything I want and these outrageous statements won't be um tiring me as a snowflake or an intolerant racist. Tomophobe bigot.
But so uh some ward issues and I can't believe we went, what, two hours without talking about Facer Street, which is something I talk about in every interview, it seems.
Facer Street, oh, Roberto's Pizza, I know Facer Street.
Um as far as what's coming up next is uh the Buchanan House, uh there was just an article actually in the paper about. A partnership the city struck with Links for Greener Learning, which is an organization that helps do community gardens, uh they work with kids, they teach. It started off actually uh teaching new Canadians, immigrants, you know, how to have sustainable gardens and things like that and. The city's entered into partnership this past year at Buchanan House, which is the building uh just across the street from Laura Secord.
Yeah, right.
And so they've put in some gardens there, they had this wonderful uh kids program called uh Eco um Eco Kids. And it was like a summer camp kind style thing and they had workshops. I visited it about a week in and I was blown away by how much the kids know. They would know way more about how to plant and. What, you know, the nutrients that the things need and they learn things about, you know, how do you protect certain plants from. Certain bugs, you plant like onions around the outside of the garden. It was just, it was a really uh amazing learning experience, so. Uh just last night at council, we approved a five-year lease with them uh for that area, they're gonna expand. I'd like to see um an actual community garden where people can go like rent plots there, so we're in talks about that and. Um it's really an exciting initiative that the St. Catherine City Council has done. A lot for like greening initiatives and I know that's something close to you uh to your heart. And so that was one of them that is is in the midst of expansion. It's really exciting in my ward, so. Um I forget what else I put on.
Dog park?
Oh, yeah, so there's.
Like a leash-free park?
Yeah, that's uh that's been something that's been in discussions for a while. Uh there's a Pals Community Group, uh I. Yeah, Pals.
Preservation of Agricultural Land Society?
Um it's a, it's a, it's a dog, yeah, group. Um that help with the, you know, the downtown dog park and we're going and they, it's kind of like an advocacy group for this and. I spoke with them a little while ago and they'd like to see one in the North End and so we're in the process of.
Dog owners, privileged white dog owners. Next thing you know, we're gonna be paying for free leash-free parks for them.
But anyway, so we're trying to find a location, uh needs to be, there's some issues, we gotta make sure drainage is right and and there's water access and things like that.
You got a place?
Buchanan was an an idea, um just behind where the community gardens is, is is putting one in there. Um there's been others discussed, actually, the infamous uh Sunset Beach, but I don't think that's gonna work out.
Oh, no, Carl Vanderkuip would be straight up your back with that.
But I'm just saying, like, I'm I'm interested.
Leash-free dog park, I don't got a dog.
Yeah, if we have any listeners out there who have suggestions or would like to see that, um yeah, so that's something that uh. I I I'm working on hopefully within the next.
I wanted to touch on first vote before I get you out of here, but again, tell me how great I was at Secord. Oh, I had the story to tell, was that um.
Okay, go ahead.
And we joke. I was at uh PAC, no, um. The Artist Center.
A Niagara Artist Center, NAC.
NAC, PAC, I always get them confused. I was with a couple of uh younger musician friends of mine and uh we were on the roof.
Not roofing, right?
No, we're, it was a concert, uh I think um.
Yeah, I heard, I heard.
Orchestra is what the, I can't remember what they're called now. I bought their CD, it's pretty good. So we're up there and this. Not kid, a thirty-year-old guy maybe.
They're the worst.
Actually, yeah, he's got his back, well, you're actually the most, I told you, it's a twenty-six-year-old, you are the most uh populist age group on the planet right now.
Yeah.
You guys should be running shit. You guys should be them. So this kid, um he's got his back to the stage and he's. Standing with his buddy, looking at me, I'm looking at him, looking at the stage, I don't even know if anyone was playing and. And he says loud enough so I can hear it, I know this guy. I'm like, nope, there's no way you know me. Cause I, it's just a joke, like, cause I I do have a public profile.
Yeah.
And I, yeah, and you know, it's through things like this, elections and radio shows and stuff like this. And he says, uh, your name Jim? I'm like, sometimes. Fannin, Fannin, right? Fannin, yeah, yeah, Jim Fannin, yeah. Shake his hand, can't remember his name now. He goes, uh, you left a mark on my heart. I'm like, I did? He says, yeah, can I tell you how? I'm like, oh, please do, like, there's nothing more important, like, I love people, even though I say I hate them. You know, I've been in business a long time, people are frustrated in politics, you know, I I hate how we're so mean to each other, women are mean to each other, men are, you know, women. We're mean to everyone. Um he said, yeah, um. You're a Green Party candidate. I go, Laura Secord, because I did a lot of debating, but it was Secord was the one that was very well uh connected. Uh Cross, there had me come in and talk to her social science um class.
Yeah.
Early in the day, um and uh so this kid, not again kid. Said, you know what, we uh similar to your story, you know, and yeah, I was, I'm, you know, I've never been the same since and this is how. I'm like, wow, because that's all you want to do is make a positive difference for someone, even if it's. Even if it's antagonistic or whatever, like somehow I got through this kid.
Yeah.
And you know, maybe it was the weed thing or the whatever, but like I out debate all these guys up there.
You did very well, I remember.
And it's because I know my shit, like I know the Green Party policy and most of it makes sense and if it didn't make sense. The Liberals and the Conservatives would stop adopting all our stuff like uh carbon tax and uh you know, carbon fee and dividend. Uh like not neutral, uh revenue neutral stuff like that. So and I love the kids. Like I I don't care, like I get in steering contests at the grocery store in line with kids, you know, like I I love them, especially the small ones, right? The high school ones, I have a different love for them because they're they're different, they need a different conversation, right? And so I I really appreciate uh you saying that because the for me, like I'm just so passionate, I'm off the. Uh I'm ninety-ninth percentile in compassion, uh or uh enthusiasm, I think it was. You should take the test, it's uh it's really good. So what's this, just before we get you out of here, first vote?
Yeah, so it's a project um that kind of came out of the uh youth forum that the. City of St. Catherine's did for the first time, um just to give you some background, the city used to have a mayor's youth advisory committee. Uh when we rejigged the committees, um the mayor decided to drop the youth advisory committee and replace it with a youth forum. Something that I helped, you know, uh plan, just kind of sat on chaired the committee um and let the others do the work, but I was there. Um and it was a great, you know, forum, we talked about civic engagement, we talked about the importance of getting involved in your community. And it was a, it was an amazing day and at the end of it, one of the participants who I knew actually from, he's in a local band, I don't know if you know Tuscany? Do you know Tuscany?
I don't think I've heard those guys. I might know the guys.
Yeah, so the the guys, uh um Nico, uh Tripodi and the the.
Tripodi?
Yeah, and Sophia DeLuca.
Okay, those names sound familiar.
But um anyway, so they're in a band called Tuscany, a little promotion for you guys.
Local music, Niagara Rocks, hashtag.
But anyway, so Nico was at this youth forum, uh he's a, he's a grade twelve student, uh and he said, this was an amazing day, loved it. What next? You know, what do I do next? How do I keep getting involved? He's he's incredibly involved, he's a a student trustee at the Catholic. District uh school board, like he's a very involved kid and so um I thought about it, I was like, okay, like what next? What what are we doing and so. Um him and there's another uh um girl that who was a speaker at the uh youth forum, uh she was a speaker. Um she was in grade twelve then, now she's in Pa- PoliSci, of course, near and dear to my heart at uh Brock University. And we've kind of banded together and we're trying to create this conference, this uh to engage. Grade twelve students in particular, because we came to the realization, just the three of us, sitting around kind of talking like this, but without cameras, that.
There's no cameras here, what are you talking about?
Grade twelve students, the next provincial election is in June of next year and half of grade twelve students are gonna be old enough. To vote in that election. I never experienced that.
Sixteen, by the way.
But like I've never experienced that because I have a late birthday, right? So like I was, you know, but half of, half of grade twelve students can vote in the next election. And that's the the percentage that will is gonna be very low, right?
Maybe that's why I take it into the region, all these guys that I was training, like the guys like you are now old enough to vote and they remember I'm the weed guy, yeah, we want Fannin in there.
Anyway, we're trying to create a program where we can actually speak to the grade twelve, um speak to the grade twelves. Show them the importance of how this affects them, you know, how that um politics in general, this is specifically on politics as opposed to the broader civic engagement. Conversation, but um we wanna, we wanna create a program where it it shows them the importance, gets them involved. And gets them educated, because you know, I remember being in grade twelve, as I said, before the de- debate that you were at, I wasn't engaged, like. Really and there you're not sitting at home watching political ads and researching platforms and, you know, and it's been two years since civics class if you're in grade twelve. So you probably haven't thought about politics for two years.
Class comes up, oh, it's only grades ten.
Grade ten, so this is the thing, so we're trying to um kind of re. Re-energize that in grade twelve, you know, if if somebody got sparked in grade ten, maybe re-energize that or whatever the case may be and 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 we want it.
Sounds like a great program.
Create, so it's very preliminary, like nothing's confirmed, we've had some preliminary conversations with the DSPN. Um you know, I I'd like to involve Brock University, you know, so we're, it's exciting.
Let me know if I can help.
Yeah.
I'm not all that, all that affiliated with the Greens anymore, I don't have anything to do with the local association, I'm not a member provincially or federally anymore, I. I watch as it goes and still, that my, you know, my favorite political party probably because they speak to me more as far as policy goes and I think they're very forward-thinking, but. Just so you know, I can come in and be unbiased, well, not unbiased, but not affiliated.
Yeah.
Um but no, and Mike, I really appreciate your time. I know you gotta get going to your lunch meeting, but.
Thank you.
Um if there's anything I can do to help out, man, I just, you know, uh there's nothing more gratifying than than saying. Uh to be, to be able to say, you know, I had a hand in that, I had a part in that, it's not about the ego, it's just making this a better place for all of us and. You know, I appreciate your generosity and your time and coming in and talking about some things that are and letting me go off on my own tangents, that's uh cool, but. The bottom line is i- if we stop talking and we and we and we we go into these camps, whether it be male and female or left and right, which are really. I think just um, we got a magnifying glass on top of them right now and. Before we burn up, I think we we need to come together a little bit more and just realize that as humans, we're far more alike than we are different. And I think we've kind of, we don't look our neighbor in the eye anymore, we don't help him out when his basement floods and you know, and maybe we do. I was always surprised when I moved to the country, man, people, they come from miles around on horseback to pull you out of the ditch, you know, type of thing, it was a different. Kind of community, so my hope is just to make myself a better version of myself so that I'm able to go into the world and make the world maybe a little bit better place. And if we stop, you know, just uh being self-absorbed and obsessed with the other guy. And why we hate them so much, which is a natural thing, I think, and um I think I'm one of the few people that I. I feel like admits, I'm trying to manage that natural hate in my heart because, you know. Anyway, I appreciate your time and uh yeah, we can do it again anytime.
I could talk all about the, you know, more about, you know, why, what you were just saying about people and and. The the generosity of people in the country, I could tell you about my Scotland trip, oh man, I can talk about hours for that, but um.
Yeah, I want, I want to keep it so that it's interesting for anybody that happens to to watch, but uh.
I appreciate this because like I I really believe, I've been trying to look at, you know, what's my why? You know, why, why am I here? I've been doing that a lot lately and and um you know, I believe that. Everyone should have a voice in shaping our community and so I'll talk to anyone, even even Jim Fannin.
Jim Fannin. And just so you know, uh I had Petrowski on because he's most controversial and I find some of the issues that he's uh going after. Uh very interesting and then he recommended Tony Quirk and then, hey, I see you at church every couple of weeks and whatnot and um. You know, I I'm I'm having more time, it's funny because, you know, I call my lefty buddy and he blows me off because I roll with bigots. And then I call my righty buddy and I have lunch with him the next day.
Yeah.
And I said, bro, I'm having a hard time here. He's like, what? I said, I'm agreeing with you and your tribe more than anybody anymore. He says, that's okay, you know. You dumb lefty, I told you you'd come over and come correct. So um. Yeah, it's uh I got a lot of time for anyone and then you, like I said, uh you know, I got a lot of time for lately people that don't, that I don't agree with. And you know, I'm guilty of uh texting you from the gallery.
Yeah.
You know, before I speak even, taunting you, like, how can you support this? I campaigned on it, I'm not gonna turn my back on it now. I'm like, I'm praying for you, you idiot. Like, I was like, oh, that's, I did say idiot, but I'm like, I'm praying for wisdom for you. I remember exactly what that, it's kind of a cut, you know what I mean? Like, oh, please vote this down and if you don't, I'm just praying to God that you have some, that you have a little bit of wisdom, because obviously you don't have it now if you disagree with me. Uh but yeah, I appreciate your time and everything you're doing and uh if you got something that you think needs to be aired. And talked about in depth, then give me a shout and we'll get her out there.
Sounds good.
Mike Britton, appreciate it. Just tell us, uh how do we get ahold of you? Put your phone number, your email address and everything out there?
Um well, so easily you can Google Mike Britton, um I'll have a website up soon, as I was mentioning, uh mikebritton.ca, very simple. Um it I have a website now, it's it's awful, but uh hopefully I'm gonna be publishing a new one within the next couple of days. Um but on the city website, there's my number, there's my email, mbritton@stcathrs.ca, all very straightforward. And if you have any suggestions on uh anything you'd like to see, anything you'd like to talk to me about. Um it just if you're looking at getting involved, I've had a few of those great conversations, so um yeah, hopefully I'll hear from all you.
All right, Facebook Live, we're getting out of here. Thanks to Mike Britton and thanks to you guys for watching. It'll be up on YouTube later.